Calling to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for November 1, 2011. Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Supervisor Brown?
Here.
Supervisor McCowen?
Here.
Supervisor Pinches?
Here.
Supervisor Hamburg?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Here. I'll call on Anna Mahoney, please, to do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll go now to County Council for an announcement.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to add to the closed session agenda another litigation item, SEIU versus County of Mendocino. It's the request for injunctive relief that was served on the county at 5:00 on Friday, so we didn't have time to actually publish it on the agenda, so I'd like to have, and we need to discuss it, so...
So you need a motion to make the appropriate findings?
Yes, we can make the appropriate findings.
So, Council, what would you like the Board to do?
I'd like the Board to take it off agenda, which would require a four-fist vote and you could make appropriate findings.
And our next item will be going into closed session, so I'll ask for a motion for the off-agenda consideration.
So moved, making the appropriate findings and asking for a suspension of the rules.
Second. So we have a motion by Supervisor McCowen, we have a second base Supervisor Brown, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed. Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Council, does that conclude what we need? Yes. Okay. Great, then we will now adjourn to closed session, returning immediately following closed session. On. Great. Okay, returning, and I will go now for a report out of closed session to County Council.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under Labor, the Board of Supervisors unanimously agreed to reject SEIU's response to the county's last best and final. The motion was made by Supervisor Pinches and the second was by Supervisor Hamburg.
Thank you, Council. We're going to go on now to item number, agenda item number three. This is public expression, and public expression is for all items that are not on the regular agenda. And to date, I have one form filled out, and that is from Mr. J.R.
Back, Chair, members of the Board. My name is J.R. Rose, you know who I am. I'm a senior advocate, so what I want to talk about is the Brown Act. I've been sitting in this, not only this chamber, but other chambers over the last few years, and the Brown Act says that a person has three minutes to talk or 10 minutes to talk, depending whether it's on an agenda item or not, though I applaud what Sheriff Tom Altman did for Mr. Beestler, I think that's the way you pronounce his name, Tom, the other day, about taking this off and set it down, so his time wouldn't be over. But I've seen, and this Board, and not only this Board, but other Boards, if they want to listen to what people say, they, this doesn't mean anything, but if they don't want to hear what you have to say, this means something to the people here, they cut you off. Sometimes the medicine, sometimes things that need to be said never get said because the Council doesn't do it. I think that, in a way, it kind of ticks me off, because certain times I like to get up here and I like to talk about things, and instead of just three minutes, but I, sometimes I don't get the time. And other people get up here, I seen it, seen it here last meeting, what you wanted on the part, the lady said up here, I know she was part of it, you should have set her down, and went on from there, but she's supposed to be part of public expression, and for 22 minutes, this conversation carried on on a Brown Act. And I think that it's unfair to the rest of the public who get up here to speak and are denied the same treatment. It may sound wrong to you, I may make you mad by talking about it, but I'm talking about what I consider as fairness. And fairness to me is, if you're going to do this, then you make, should make it fair for everybody. Not just what you want to hear, but sometimes what you don't want to hear. I realize that, because sometimes I don't want to hear things, but I listen to it, because that's the only way you learn from other people, is things that you sometimes don't want to hear. But that's mainly what I wanted to say. I'd like to see a little bit more fairness on this Brown Act, if you're going to do it. If you want to stop people in three minutes, set them down and ask them questions, that's one thing, but to deliberately don't do it, that's another one. And I've seen it happen over the last seven years in here. And like I said, I think it's time, you should change it, because if you're not going to force a Brown Act, then don't use it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Any other comments from the public not, for items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will go forward on to agenda item number 6E. This is discussion and possible adoption of resolution implementing terms and conditions for the employees in the job classifications in the bargaining unit represented by the Service Employees International Union, SEIU, Local 10 to 1. I will go to the CEO, and she will introduce the item.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. For this item, Pat Meek, our Human Resources Director, and Rick Haig, our County Chief Negotiator, will be presenting this item to the Board, and this is regarding our impasse with SEIU. Ms. Meek, thank you.
Good morning. What I'm going to do is review the summary of the request. The agenda title is discussion and possible adoption of resolutions implementing terms and conditions for the employees in the job classifications in the bargaining unit represented by SEIU, Local 1021. The summary of the request is as follows. Negotiations between the County and Service Employees International Union, Local 1021, began in August of 2010. The memorandum of understanding expired September 30, 2010. After at least 19 meet and confer sessions failed to produce an agreement, impasse was declared. The parties agreed to utilize mediation with a mediator from the California State Mediation and Conciliation Service. Mediation was conducted on October 11, October 17, and on October 20, 2011. Both parties made a good faith attempt to resolve differences between them, but ultimately mediation was not successful. On October 20, 2011, the county sent its last best and final offer to SEIU, Local 1021, with a 5:00 p.m. deadline on October 28 to accept the offer. The Local 1021 did not accept the county's last best and final offer with the county, so the county needs to be prepared to move forward with the imposition process due to serious budget constraints. Therefore, it's recommended that the Board of Supervisors consider adopting a resolution implementing the terms and conditions as set forth in Exhibit A to the resolution. The recommended action motion, it is recommended that the Board of Supervisors adopt a resolution to implement terms and conditions for employees in the job classifications in the bargaining unit represented by Service Employees International Union, Local 1021.
Thank you, Ms. Meek. Any additional comments from staff? Any Board comments at this time? Okay, we're going to go to public comment on this item. I have a few slips thus far. Anyone wishing to speak, please bring forward a slip from the back of the room with your name on it, and you will be given three minutes. I want to begin by saying what some of the ground rules are. This is going to be a mutually respectful process. This is not to have any personal attacks, either coming from those who are here to address the Board or from Board members. So again, a respectful process, it is not to be a personal discussion, and I would like everyone to be mindful of that. If it can't continue in an orderly fashion, then the Board will take a recess. So I'm expecting that, in fact, it will. Going first to Dolly Riley?
Thank you.
You will have three minutes.
Okay. My name's Dolly Riley, I'm a social worker with CPS. It is so unfortunate, I have to wear this silly sign, and I am wearing it, and I'm going to say a few quick words about it. Okay. You're voting on a 12.5% pay decrease for SEIU workers and social services, it's mostly social services and public health folks. Traditionally, it's been the eligibility workers and the social worker assistants and others who are at the lower end of the pay scale who must collect food stamps, just like their clients. With a 1/8 pay decrease, that's more than 10th, 1/8 or 12.5%, that will certainly increase. Is that what you want? Most SEIU members do not earn the same pay as District Attorney and Sheriff's Department employees, so 12.5% decrease is not in parity, sorry, I'm checking my notes, with other departments who earn greater wage. We at SEIU do not have to work on how to shelter our taxes as much as how to survive and get our kids to college. My son's a senior at Sac State. With such a pay decrease, I can no longer help him with his rent, and he's out. What's wrong with the 10% cut in hours and wages, thereby leaving our hard-earned rate of pay intact? Well, there would be 10% less services to the public, as is appropriate in a cash-strapped county. What's right with a 10% pay decrease in hours and wages, or, you know, comparable hours and wages? Well, we can have the option, as employees, to pick up four hours somewhere to do something. Housekeeping, my son has a catering business, I could help there, and still put my younger son through college. Okay, that's what's right about it. I could, let's see, okay, I'm almost done here, folks. I know, I just have a few seconds left. I'm going to ask, don't starve us. No 12.5% pay decrease. We don't earn that much to begin with, and parity. DA, Sheriff had pay decreases. I know they did, 10%, 12%, but they earn more than the SEIU members. I don't favor infighting among valued county employees, just parity. This process, the process, has been shameful on both sides. It needs to stop, it needs to be worked out. I have faith in the people here, I really do. It's shameful I had to take off work even to be here, I need to be doing my job. I'm asking you to do the right, right thing, honor the negotiations. It's just too bad it's gotten this far in my last five, oh, I'm going over. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, right on time.
My name is Lynda Collier, I work for Planning and Building. I've been a dedicated county employee for 34 years. Shame on you for choosing imposition as your negotiating strategy from the beginning versus good-faith bargaining. You have unilaterally driven to impasse with every single bargaining unit you were obligated to bargain with in 2010 and 2011. You drove us all to impasse so you could put yourselves in the position you are today. County employees in the SEIU bargaining unit have proposed five settlement offers to reduce labor costs by 7.5% to 10%, up to $1.5 million. You have rejected every offer. Your goal is to impose. Well, congratulations, you have effectively reached your goal. Today, you can take what you want by resolution, because you have exhausted the collective bargaining process as planned. Shame on you for putting us all in this position. Shame on you.
Shame on you! Shame on you! Shame on you!
First off, I'd like to say this is a very, very sad day for all people who live in Mendocino County. Shame on you for being physically irresponsible and hiding your agenda from the community. We offered to take mandatory time off a year ago, and you rejected the offer. The county could have earned $28,000 a week while in contract negotiations if you had accepted it. Employees are offering to make great sacrifices while you play politics. Your objective is not to reach an agreement that produces savings for the county, your objective is to undermine the collective bargaining process, and to do things your way, no matter how unreasonable. Shame on you.
Shame on you! Shame on you!
Okay, the Board's going to take a recess?
Well, no, this, this town, if it continues, if it continues... Shame on you! Shame on you! Shame on you!
We're reconvening at 10:37. So we have orders from the fire marshal that we need to have the accessway to the podium open. You may be in the hallway. There is audio of the proceedings in the hallway. There's also conference room C around to the rear of this building.
There's audio outside.
Heard you. I'll have the clerk check on the audio. There should be audio in the hall. There's also audio in conference room C. And we're at maximum capacity now. We need to keep, again, the doorway in particular open, but also the hallway. Is the audio working?
The audio was working.
It was working. We're having the clerk check on the audio. But there is audio capability in conference room C. So we're going to move forward, again, with three minutes from each person on public expression. If you'd like to fill out a form at the back, bring it forward to the clerk. You'll have three minutes for your comments. And we will not have any other extraneous comments or sounds, or we will need to clear the room for the proceeding. So I'll go now to Lee Farr. Mr. Farr, you'll have three minutes.
Lee Farr, Information Services.
We don't have a clerk.
Shame on you for setting the stage for economic instability in Mendocino County. Your only plan is and has been the one you're prepared to take action on today, an imposition of across-the-board salary reduction. Imposition will effectively remove $7 million from the pockets of our employees. Imposition will effectively remove $7 million from the local economy. Shame on you to put $734,000 into your reserve. This plan is flawed and fails in so many ways. Shame on you for causing and planning economic instability in the cities of Fort Bragg, Ukiah, and Willets instead of really trying to problem-solve. Shame on you.
We'll go now to Helen Michael. Helen?
I'm Helen Michael. I work at Social Services. Shame on you. Shame on you for your anti-union agenda. Your agenda is clear, and we are not shocked that you, as of last week, hired an expensive, well-known union-busting law firm, Myers-Navek, to help you accomplish your goals. The right to collectively bargain is recognized through international human rights conventions. Article 23 of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights identifies the ability to organize unions as a fundamental human right. Item 2A of the International Labor Organization's Declaration on Fundamental Principles and Rights at Work defines the freedom of association and the effective recognition of the right to collective bargaining as an essential right of workers. The fact that at least three of you are united and behind an attempt to take away our fundamental right to collectively bargain is shameful. Shame on you for hiring a union-busting law firm at our expense. Shame on you. Shame on you.
Raylene Schaefer. And that's the last form I have, so that'll conclude public comment unless anyone else would like to come forward with a form.
My name is Raylene Schaefer, and I work at the District Attorney's Office. We do not support the way we have been handled in these negotiations, yet you have an opportunity to do the right thing right now. We encourage you to do what is right, and vote no on imposition. It is what's best for the county, the employees, and the community you serve. Vote no.
Is there anyone else for public comment on this item? This is item number 6E. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Laura Anderson.
Into the microphone, please.
My name is Laura Anderson. I work for Adult Services. I'm a social worker, and I just want to say that we're doing a really lot of work for this county. We're making a difference in people's lives every day. This is a very big deal. We work very hard, and we care. We care about Mendocino County, and that's why we're here. And we feel disrespected. We feel unappreciated. We're angry, but all we want to do is go to work and help people. So just think about that. Think about what we're doing for this county, keeping people off the streets, keeping people fed, keeping people housed, helping the children that are being abused. This is important work. This is the most important work. This is the work that this country needs to concentrate on. That's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment? Please come forward, state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Valerie Logcannon. I work for Public Health. For my entire 20 years here at the county, I've worked for grants, no general fund money, and almost all my staff works for grants as well. I'm trying my hardest to fit as many ongoing costs into my grants as possible, and that usually means teasing out things that are usually considered indirect costs, things like utilities and telephone, that in most grant budgets, the state or the feds are expecting the county to cover those costs. I've made my best effort to tease those costs out and put them as separate line items in my budget. Just yesterday, I had a budget rejected on two emergency preparedness grants. That's my, 90% of my funding comes from emergency preparedness for public health, which is disease outbreaks and anthrax types of scenarios. And my budgets were rejected despite my best efforts to represent you and what you need. And the quote from my project officer was, "In your budgets, we have encountered indirect cost creep, and we are seeing a marked increase in budget line items for costs that appear to fit under the definition of indirect or administrative operating expenses." Both of my grants, one of them has a 15% allowance for administrative fees. You get that right off the top of the grant. The other grant has a 10% indirect allowance for personnel and benefits only. If you increase my staff by 10%, you're getting less from my grant. And I suspect, I know in my history of public health, that's the way grants work. They only allow you a certain percentage on personnel and indirect. If you're cutting that, you're going to get less money going to the county. I don't object to paying these fees out of my grants. I get it, and I support it. I'm trying to do the best I can to get you as much as I can without impacting my program deliverables. The state and the feds expect you to pay these costs, and you're going to end up getting less. Please, if you're going to cut our pay, cut our time as well. We need time for wellness. We need, I have two other jobs besides this, very part-time, but they're, and all of my staff have other jobs as well. I get it if you have to cut our pay, but cut our time. So please don't approve this proposal before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else for public comment? Public comment? Okay, that will, okay, come forward quickly, because we don't have a form from you. You need to fill out a form and bring it forward, then we know who's speaking.
Good morning. I'm Jill Bradley. I work at EFS Family Services, have for almost 10 years. I attended a conference three years ago in San Francisco, not surprisingly one of the last conferences available, and the opening speaker opened up with one general theme, which spoke to my heart, which was, "Many of you are thinking about leaving your jobs at this time." That was three years ago because of what is on the forefront. If you leave, who will do this job?" And that spoke to me. That grabbed my heart, and I realized, "This is my calling. This is what I want to do." And it was painful to come here today when I had to leave a lobby full of people that are hungry. I have never been hungry in my life. I'm so grateful, but my father came from a very, a family that was very suppressed with food instability. That is why I'm chosen to do this, I've chosen to do this work, and I'm passionate about it. My point of view is, we have given, we're givers. That's the kind of people that are drawn to health and human services, and I know that you mostly know that. We are givers. We've given our money, and we're willing to give our money, but we're willing to do it in a way that is respectful and honorable. And as the previous speaker spoke, most of us are in a situation where we have to take second jobs. Please consider, I know that MTO has been off the table for quite some time, but that works for us. You get money. We get a lifestyle that we can continue to live with, and we would appreciate you considering this again. To just impose 12.5% is shocking to me that we would even get here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person?
My name's Jennifer Sukney. I work with Child Protective Services, or what used to be known as Child Protective Services. I've worked for this county since January 29, 1995, and I've been doing the job for 22 years, because I did it for five years in Kern County. You have in me a very experienced, passionate, and dedicated worker. We work through lunches a lot of times because we have court deadlines for filing, because if we don't, then kids are put back at risk. This is a job I am passionate about, and I've gotten to the place now where I don't want to come to work. All I want to do is have a calendar with three and a half years till I turn 65 and can get Medicare, and mark off the days one at a time. And it feels like you all have stolen that from me. I love my job. I love taking care of the kids on my job and working with the families towards finding solutions and helping them become productive members of this society. You take away the buying power of people, you take away other stuff. What's left? I'm one house payment away from losing my housing situation. I have coworkers who are $30 away now from being able to get on welfare and food stamps, your own employees. What does that say about our county? Shame on all of you.
Anyone else? Okay. Okay, this will be the last person for public comment. I have no more forms. This will be the last person. Go ahead, please. You have three minutes.
My name is Alexander Brickin. I work for Mental Health. I've worked for the county for over 10 years now, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you. I was shocked watching the negotiation process over the last year, that people were being sent to represent the county that actually had no authority to make a deal. They were just sitting there and listening, and as it went on with agreement after agreement and then mediation, not accepted. And it's pretty clear that you're, we're not inviting us into the process of problem-solving. It's our county. I really feel it's our county, and it's our money. I just paid land taxes today. We're not just, this isn't a private business. This is, this county is all of our counties. We live here, and there's a lot of people in our bargaining unit that don't make very much money. We have a lot of people in our bargaining unit, janitors, staff assistants, people that are face-to-face with the public every day. They're making in the teens an hourly wage, and to, I don't know how they can even live on that. And if their car breaks down or something, they're out of it, except for the help of friends and things. I urge you today to not vote for imposition, to vote no on imposition. It's the right thing to do. I think you should go back and consider going back in good faith in negotiating process and working something out that works for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Sue Vassal Blenkinship?
Good morning. My name's Sue Black Glass Blenkinship. I've been working for the county for just over 15 years. I've worked my way up, and the last two years, I've been knocked down because positions have gotten eliminated. Needing to retain a job, I have retained a position. I'm now probably one of the bottom, one of the lower levels of employees now. If you do this 12.5%, I will have gone down 29% in two and a half years. 29%. And you got 43% of a raise a few years ago? I'm sorry. That really does put shame on you. We are in a difficult position. Every single person here is going to suffer, and so is the county, and so is the community. What is this, a political agenda? We're getting scared, aren't you? Thanks.
Good. Thank you very much. So, okay, we're returning now to the board, to my colleagues for any comments, and then we'll also return to staff if they have any comments. Board members? Any comments from staff? Did you want to give us any follow-up? Okay, return to my colleagues for action on the matter. Supervisor Pinches?
Madam Chair, this is a difficult day for everybody in Mendocino County. I think that the financial condition, not only the present financial condition... I think that the financial condition, not only the present financial condition, but the future financial condition, is going to get worse. The numbers are clearly coming in indicating that at all levels, whether it's building planning, revenues, or tax assessments, it's, it's, it's not a good situation. And so, at this time, although I'd like to take a different direction, I will move for the recommended action.
So we have, quiet. If there's not quiet, we are going to clear the boardroom and continue our business. This is not the time for, for public expression. You need to be quiet. This is a proceeding, and we need to have quiet. I hope you understand that. If there's any more outbursts of any type, we're going to have to clear the room. That's just the procedure we have to follow. Thank you. So we have a motion by Supervisor Pinches. Is there a second to the motion? Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will second the motion, and the fact is that a little over a year ago, people stood before the board at budget time and said, "You need to declare bankruptcy." And looking at the books of the county, that it wasn't hard to see why people would, would make those statements to us. And the county is still in a position where we are very seriously at risk financially. And so the ability of the county to function, I think, is uppermost in all of our minds. And that really is why we are where we are today, as much as this isn't where we want to be. And so, you know, no one takes any satisfaction in this action, but it's necessary for the county in order to maintain its financial solvency, which is still in question going forward. There's many challenges still ahead financially for the county in the coming year or two. We don't know how long this is going to go on.
Thank you Supervisor. Any other comments from my colleagues?
Before we vote, the Chair wants to announce, because we have, we have two items, and I believe, one is, yes, it is a timed hearing. We have a Community Development Commission report and a public hearing that we're both somewhat late for. So as soon as we conclude this vote, the board will take a 10-minute recess, and then we will convene, and we will go right to the report, and then to the notice public So it, does the clerk have the motion? Okay, we're going to vote by the buttons, please. Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously.
Taking a 10-minute recess.
Recall, 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 recall. Shame on you, Dan Ever.
I wonder if Pinches is our area.
You lied.
Hope you're on our side.
Carmel's back there smiling.
She's smiling the whole time.
I wonder if she could.
Okay. Board is returning at 11:10 after a brief recess. There's been a request to just take the consent calendar before our items number 6C and 6D, so we will briefly do that. Any items to be pulled, we will hear those later on in the day. So we will go to item number five, which is the consent calendar. Could the clerk please establish proper notice?
Proper notice has been established, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will go to Supervisor McCowen on consent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will pull item N for discussion.
Okay. So Supervisor, to approve the rest, that was the request, so we'll hold that one for later on today.
Was that N or M?
N.
Okay, N.
As in Nancy. Any other items on consent that board members would like pulled for separate consideration or discussion? Supervisor Pinches.
Madam Chair, without needing more pull, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve this consent calendar.
Second.
So a motion by Supervisor Pinches, and a second by Supervisor Hamburg. Let's go to public comment on the consent calendar. Seeing none, returning to the board with the motion and the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none. Motion passes unanimously, and later on in today's agenda, we will take up the pulled item, consent item number five, N.
Madam Chair, if I may, just a second.
Yes.
We have an opportunity here. This is our project manager for the Willis bypass, for Caltrans, Dave Kelly. He's right here. Put a face to the.
Okay, would Mr. Kelly like to come forward and just say hello?
Just say hi.
And then we're going to move on to our item.
Well, I thank, I thank the council for the, excuse me, the board supervisors for the consent calendar vote, and I appreciate the support we've gotten from MCOG and from the board of supervisors on our project over the years. And the project is looking good. The only thing we're lacking is our 404 permit. We're working actively with the court, and we expect to have that by the February CTC vote. And actually, the funding, surprisingly, is looking good, too. So everything thumbs up today.
Today. Good.
Thank you very much.
See, it's better to hear it from the man instead of hearing it from me.
This is true. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
So we'll go now to item number 6C. This is Presentation of Community Development Commission of Mendocino County's 2010 Annual Report. And Mr. Dunnecliff, representing the executive office.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve Dunnecliff with the county executive office. I'd like to introduce Mr. Todd Crabtree, Executive Director of the Community Development Commission of Mendocino County, or CDC, who's here to present their 2010 Annual Report.
Hello, board supervisors, thank you for the invitation. Todd Crabtree, Executive Director of Community Development Commission, also known as CDC. I'll try to make this brief. Every year, we just come and give a presentation of our annual report. In 2010, our major highlights, if you look at our highlights page, probably the biggest highlight was the transition of our public housing to voucher-based housing. We did that, and we came in front of the board and discussed it, basically because HUD, our major funding source, was cutting public housing funding, and it was the only way we could keep our housing affordable and keep our cash flow positive. Other major activities we have, we've gone three years in a row without an injury. We, 2010 was the first year, we had vouchers specifically for veterans. It was a special program, one of the few housing authorities in the country that has what's called BASH, Veterans Assistance Supportive Housing vouchers. So we're excited about that. We've been working to administer grants for the county and the cities. One of them is a county housing rehab program. Another is a county tenant-based rental assistance, it's very similar to Section 8 vouchers. It's just that our Section 8, we have a huge waiting list, and it was just a way to provide some more housing for people through a grant program. We've also administered a program for the city of Ucaya, or helping to rehab the UCC Food Bank Building. If you've driven by there, you've probably seen the work going on right there, where we're administering that for the city. We're also working with PG&E to do an energy watch program, and that's what we're doing briefly. If there are any questions?
Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I apologize for not asking this question in advance, so it, it might be that I'm just raising the question, and it might take some research to answer. But as you know, a lot of our senior citizens and other people on a fixed income live in mobile home parks as a form of affordable housing, and many of, and I assume that if, if they are renting the unit, and it belongs to the park owner, they potentially could be eligible for rental assistance if the owner wanted to put that property into a program. But is there an option for a senior or other low-income person who owns their mobile home to potentially apply for rental assistance to help pay the space rent on that home? And again, it's kind of an, maybe out-of-the-blue question, so.
Oh, well, yeah, our program is eligible to pay for space rent, if they own the home and they're renting a space.
So any senior who is low-income eligible?
It's eligible. But, having said that, just to be clear, we're federally funded, just so I don't want to get people's hopes up, and then I have to unfortunately be the opposite. Our waiting list has been closed, probably close to three years now. We're federally funded, so what happens in Congress affects us more than what happens in Sacramento. We've, we've had our funds cut by about 20%. We're still keeping everything in the block, but we haven't been able to open for three years. That's why we did the tenant-based rental assistance application with county to help some people, but that program's ending this year. So eligible, yes, unfortunately, funds availability. We don't, we have, right now, we've done what's called clearing our waiting list, to see, see who's still in the, in the county. A lot of people moved away because of the economy. We still have over 300 people on the waiting list, and we probably, I don't see what's, what's going on in Congress, when we, when we're going to be able to open the waiting list. So eligible, yes, funds sadly no, is the, is the honest answer.
Thank you.
I wish I had a better answer, but unfortunately, with the way that the Congress is going, I just don't see us having funds anytime soon for rental assistance, other than veterans. We still have some vouchers, even though we're coming, we're getting close to maxing out veterans, and we're hoping to get more. Right now, it's the only one Congress has, that hasn't cut.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pinches.
Just a quick comment, Todd. The Bechtel Creek Village, which is your largest unit in the whole system?
60 units.
60 units in Willis. I just, I, to me, it's really a gem for the Willis area community. I appreciate that being in, in my district, but, but it's, I just think it's, it's well-cared-for. It looks great.
Thank you very much, and that is.
And another point, I haven't heard a complaint in over a year about anything, whether it's the flowers of the lawn needs mowed or anything, so it's.
If you'd like to come visit anyway.
Oh, I'm, I'm in there every once in a while, so.
I think you've seen we've built the raised gardens.
I have some friends that live there.
And it's positive reflection, I think, on the resident managers, Dean, Sonny, have done an excellent job in taking care of the property. Thank you very much.
What is the occupancy rate at Bechtel? It's al, it's always full. Is there, is there quite a waiting list there?
Yeah, there is a waiting list, and occupancy in Bechtel is unique in that because of the nature of our residency, we'll go 100%, and then we might have three openings sadly, because people either need full-time care if they need to move away, or they pass away, and then we might have a, three, three openings in a month, and then we won't have openings again for six months. But it is usually our biggest waiting list. The other thing I wanted to mention, I didn't mention, because thinking of the coast, we did get funds through a stimulus-funded program, CDBG, to redo, renovate and rehab a lot of our properties on the coast of Fort Bryant. If you've seen Glass Beach, I think it looks a lot better. And that was actually working with the city of Fort Bryant. The city, the city was the applicant, and we worked to do the rehab work there.
Because I think that is in the city limits, the Glass Beach project.
And I'll just say, Holly Ranch Village, because of the funding cuts, we're, we're hoping, since we are operating in the block, to pay down the outstanding debt, and we'll probably issue bonds ourselves, because there's just nothing out there really to get funds to rebuild the remaining 10 units.
Supervisor Hamburg.
Well, first of all, Todd, I wanted to thank you for the report.
Thank you. It was nice meeting you, I haven't met you yet.
Very informative, thank you. And you mentioned that you're, you're only taking additions to the waiting list from veterans, is that correct?
Well, people can apply. It's just, with the waiting list being what it is, unless you have a preference for, you know, veterans, or if it's a support, it's called a, a family unification program, where the voucher helps bring a family back together.
Right.
Who's been separated because of problems. So there's a couple of preferences we have, but basically, the normal waiting list, no, we, it's just, we don't have the funds, so.
And to those two groups you just mentioned, do they, do they just take their place in the line on the waiting list, or are there special waiting lists?
No, they get special points. If they, if they fill out that they have, you know, a family unification program, they move up, and then, and then if we do, if there is a way to give them a voucher, we will. But right now, just to give you an idea, we're at, this past year, 110% of our allocation. We're actually using our reserve.
And your main waiting list, your biggest waiting list is the Section 8?
Yes.
And that's the one that has approximately 900? Is that the one that has 900 households, or is that just?
We should have 900 households. We earn our high rent income. What they do is they give us a block of money.
Yeah.
Basically, with the block of money, we're actually assisting more about 690 right now.
Yeah, I did.
Because of people's incomes going down, and rents not really going down with that, the amount of assistance we had to provide to each household has actually been increasing.
So what's the average amount of rental assistance to a typical family that's under CDC's programs?
500 and 550 a month. We, because the other thing.
So 6, 6, 7,000 a year?
Mm-hmm. Because the other component is, for HUD, 75% of the people who receive Section 8, 75% of the people we help, should be extremely low income, which means they're at 30% or below the median income. So we're helping, you know, the poorest of the poor primarily. So you're looking at people who might be like, say, on a fixed income, disability income, they might, they might only get 10,000 a year. So those, so that's why the assistance might seem very high, because we're, we're paying, because it's capped at 30% of what they can afford, so they might only be able to afford $50 a month in rent, and we're paying the difference.
Yeah. I was just looking at the figures. If you had 6 million in rental assistance available, and you're serving, was it 590 or 690?
690.
690. Just divide that out, it's about $8,000. So that's the amount of subsidy that is being provided per family.
Yeah, because when you, the other factor is utilities. Utilities of the three cities have increased greatly, so we also have to pay if there's a big utility spike, because people's, they can only pay so much, it's capped. So when we have the utilities of the three cities have gone up in the past three years, we have to cover that, and then we have to cover if their incomes go down or fix. So it has increased, yeah, when I started, just, you know, in this position five years ago, I think the average was closer to 375 a month, and now it's the average is closer to 550.
Yeah.
Because every time, you know, when in-home health services gets cut by the state, a lot of those people are people who receive rental assistance from us, so the amount of assistance we pay has to go up.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, and the Congress is cutting us on the other.
So in kind of a weird way, it does, it does help property owners and landlords.
Yeah, I, I think.
Who otherwise, you know, may not be able to find tenants at the price they want to charge.
Right, and they know with us that they're going to get a check.
They can depend on, yeah.
So if income, you know, fluctuations with somebody who isn't on the program, they might not know if they're going to get a check, a rental check that month. They know with us that it will.
They know with you. And I just have one other question, in the, the section where you, well, unfortunately, the pages aren't marked, that's why.
Yeah, I just saw that. I'm going to start numbering.
Aren't numbered, that's why.
That might help. It's getting bigger. It used to be not that big enough to worry about numbering, but I think it is now.
So you say, you're talking about the Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing vouchers are for veterans who are enrolled in the VA clinic. Does that just mean that they're getting VA clinic services?
Yeah, well, what, the way it works is, it's a program that, we don't set up the regulations, but HUD administers it with the Veterans Affairs.
Okay.
Part of Veterans Affairs. So it's actually a veterans program, it's funded through the veterans, so they have to be referred and receive counseling through the Veterans Administration before we can provide them assistance. Actually, that's what, we had a small delay, because it took them a while to fill that position. There's a new position for the county, for Mendocino Lake County.
Got it.
So, you know, they, that's, that's.
Right.
Their regulation, that's how it has to work. They hired.
So then, so then you mentioned that there was a problem with the Ucaya VA office. Were you talking about the county's operation?
No. The problem was there wasn't anybody in the position. So it was a new position.
Right.
And there was a government, I think federal government hiring freeze, even though they earmarked this position, and they had the funds for it, they went, so we went about, I think, I want to say between six and eight months, waiting for that position to get filled, because somebody was in it, and they left after a month and a half, and then we had to wait for them to fill. Sometimes somebody from Sonoma County would try to come up, but basically, we went, where we weren't able to house people, and then in the past three months, we pretty much filled up to 50, just because we had to, we were ready to go, and it was just waiting for the Veterans Administration.
And so, since April, you've had those positions.
I think we're actually close to being filled, yeah. It was just, yeah, we were waiting for the Veterans Administration to fill that position, so they could refer people to us. That was their process.
Right. And the, you know, the only other thing that struck me, I mean, you do a lot of, lot of good work.
Thank you.
In the county, but, you know, and this came through in your message, that there just isn't the funding necessary to, I mean, I don't know, those, those 690 families, you know, does that represent, you know, 20%? Does it represent 30% of, of the eligible population if the funds were there?
Yeah, I think if the funds were there, it would probably double.[1764.83] I think if the funds were there, it would probably double.
Because you look at these big amounts of money, then you, then you talk in your report about how, you know, you're able to help five families or two families, and it's great, but it, I think it also demonstrates the extent of the need and the way that the need really outstrips the availability of funding.
It is, and it's my concern is, you know, what happens with Congress. I mean, they're in discussions, again, it's been a stressful year and a half, because it seems like every, they might, they get a kind of a temporary solution and then I don't know what's going to happen, because a month or two later, they're back at it again.
Well, if you were here an hour ago, you would have seen just how high the stress level is throughout the county.
I think he was.
I was here for that.
Were you here for that?
But I mean, I'm talking about that for the federal level. That's my stress level is, because it's like at least.
Yeah, but they have a printing press. They can just create more money. We don't have one down.
Yeah, well, my concern is, it's tough for me, because it's like it's being affected by people, you know, in other states and what they're, what they can, because they might not see, they might not have the same housing, you know, needs we do. So, you know, they can see, they, they might see it's okay to cut housing and, you know, in other state, where in California, there's a huge need for it.
I don't know if those states truly exist anymore, Todd, unless, you know, in some people's minds.
Relatively speaking, I suppose.
Yeah, maybe relatively speaking. Anyway, thank you, Minister.
Supervisor Brown. Thank you, Chair Smith, and I do appreciate all the questions that have been asked and answered, Todd. Thank you. And especially Supervisor McCowen bringing up the question and about seniors in mobile home parks and the rental they pay. But we do have an opportunity, perhaps Supervisor Hamburg, to add this particular topic on our federal legislative platform and perhaps Mr. Crabtree can work with Kristy Furman out of the CEO's office with some type of language so we can get it added to our final platform, which will be adopted sometime in December. But if you could, you know, talk to Ms. Furman, I'd sure appreciate it and let's get it added.
I'll be glad to. And I know the board is considering a mobile home ordinance and, you know, I know you'd have, you have to look at it closely and making sure you don't create disincentives, but if anything you can help with the seniors, because we do worry about their housing right now, so we do hope to get her able to consider something.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions of Mr. Crabtree. Did the clerk have a comment?
I just wanted to confirm if that was a board directive.
On?
Regarding Ms. Furman, working with Mr. Crabtree.
To work on affordable housing issues relative to federal funding?
Well, it's to the ad hoc, I think.
Thank you.
So is there agreement from board members? I don't think there's any disagreement.
I will contact Ms. Furman.
Yeah. Because there's a, there's a whole list of federal programs that relate to housing that clearly we could be advocates for. So Mr. Crabtree, to continue the discussion on veteran, the veterans' vouchers, I attended a meeting, I believe it was the Health and Human Services Advisory Board meeting on the coast, and you talked about the challenges in using these vouchers in the coast. Is there, is there any way or has anything been done to try to create some kind of an advocacy program or networking so veterans that have the needs on the coast can actually be placed in housing on the coast?
Not only have somebody from the Veterans Administration doing that role.
Good.
It's gotten a lot better. That was, see, the problem was, when somebody's only coming up from Sonoma County, part-time, when they had time, it was like, you know, extra duty as assigned, they would just kind of have to, you know, they didn't know the area and they would just kind of go wherever housing was easiest to find. And finding affordable housing on the coast is probably the hardest location we have. So now we have somebody based here, it's gotten a lot better. And I can't say we can't take credit for that. It was the Veterans Administration hiring somebody and the person they've hired is excellent.
Good. That's good. And they're based in Ukiah?
Mm-hmm.
So they're actually in the county.
Right.
Versus trying to come up from Sonoma.
Yeah, somebody from, coming up from Sonoma County in spare time, and Sonoma County also has, you know, full work down there.
Now, they also cover Lake, don't they?
Mm-hmm.
Isn't it, it's, do we share the vouchers with Lake or do they have their own vouchers?
Well, all vouchers have what's called the portability, portability. So if you take a voucher and you keep it, eventually you want to move, you take the voucher with you. So there is a, so that's the same thing with our Section 8. If you take it and you stay here for a year in the county and you want to move to Nebraska, you take the voucher with you. That's a federal regulation, it's called, so they don't lose their voucher if they move.
Good. Thank you. A question on the PG&E program, the Low Income Energy Efficiency Program. It talks about the $550,000 and this could help and assist with energy efficiency measures for up to 800 low-income residents, but then it mentions there, there have only been five installations to date. What do those installations cover and how do we get more people sort of going down that path?
Well, first I'll just say it's just five because we just started. This is 2010's highlights, so it's just a matter, we're just starting with PG&E.
Right.
We just started with their program, you know, applying on behalf of the county. So that's the only issue and why it's, as far as what it covers, I'd probably ask Craig wants to, Craig Schlotter, our Community Development Manager, he administers it. I could speak, but he could probably speak more accurately.
Just briefly, that would be good, just to clarify what that is, because we were informed of the program, but just having a few specifics would be great.
Good morning. Craig Schlotter, Community Development Manager, CDC. The Low Income Energy Efficiency Program, now it's called as, it's known as the Energy Savings Assistance Program, it's changed the name in 2011. It primarily helps low-income individuals with weatherization measures. So this would be pipe wrap, faucet aerators, CFLs, primarily CFLs, because that's the, what we call the low-hanging fruit, saves up to 30 percent of your monthly utility bill in energy. And these are all free to the low-income customer.
So is this an annual amount that's renewable or is this a fixed amount we just need to spend until it's gone?
It's an annual amount. We were awarded a contract through PG&E. It's for, they award it each year and then you have an amendment each year as long as you're meeting your production goals.
And so you said it just started, so it isn't reflective in?
Yes. I think in 2011 already, we've served, I want to say, up around 60 or 70 low-income residents.
Good. Great.
And just wrapping up, PG&E so far has taken the position, the more we do, the more they look to try to be able to fund us. So if you do want to get the word out in your districts and have people call us, you know, that should mean, hopefully, we can just bring more money into the county.
Great. Good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any members of the public wishing to address this topic? Please come forward.
My name is Karen. My last name is Ann. I would like to go back in time related to the Community Development Commission and remind you all that there is still the missing money from the fire insurance settlement that was paid. And I've been here for many years pointing that out to you. And I even attempted to open up the grand jury investigation, had been conducted twice. It was required, answers were required, which is a state law, they were ignored and those reports were filed without the legal responses. Where was the money? So I took it upon myself last year to spend a great deal of effort calling upon Judge Richard Henderson, which if you put his name in, you can find my blog site with his name, or Social Justice or Ever Forward Productions, to at least explain to me, since he took my housing as though I had defrauded the housing authority, just because I was going to a film festival, because I had already had to report the resident manager at that senior center for the pot growing and the other things. He'd already, he's a dude that burned down your public housing building and it was due to his carelessness. I spoke with the fire chief, he said it's possible, he could have been doing an indoor grow. They transferred him to the senior center. I know you've all heard this, but I might come every year and say it again, because how can you sit on it? And then he grew and then he told me and then I investigated, they were selling to kids, him and his partners, and then the police told me I'd be run out of town and then I was on a pretense, false. So all the judicial performance review papers I filed on Henderson are on the blog site. The point is, the new district attorney knows the story and Dave assured me before I ran for office, if he won, he will open it up, because all of you were obligated. You all ignored your legal responsibilities. County Council interfered with the investigation I called for. It's on record. She and Judge Henderson undermined it. That's completely the opposite of what the grand jury is for. The grand jury is for the people to get to the truth and the officials who are being asked to be investigated don't get to say, "Call it off." So this time, the district attorney is making sure, he's informed me, giving me some instructions how to write for it, how to call it, how to point out that the county council has to forego her position of what she might usually have to influence grand jury, that she is also going to be investigated and being asked that she be investigated for obstruction of justice. The housing authority gives housing vouchers to people that grow pot, they ignore it, you've got missing fire money, you're going to have a whole bunch more homeless people because of the action you just took. So why doesn't somebody care where the money is?
Okay, Ms. Ann, your time is up.
Thank you. I see that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one more request, Mr. Crabtree. I think this is a valid request. Could you just mention a little bit about the rebuild program? And then that will conclude public comment and we'll return to the board.
Yeah, the rebuild program is administered by Craig Schlotter, so if you have any specific questions, we'll ask him to come back up. Basically, the rebuild program is, the concept is gap financing for businesses, businesses in this kind of, in kind of an over-under situation, they need debt financing. The idea is basically, we came up with the idea based on how we, the down payment assistance, which is helping people buy homes, where, say, a business went to a bank or a lender and they need 150,000, say, to stay in business, to keep people employed, maybe even to expand, but the bank underwrites it and says, "We can only feel comfortable doing 100,000." The rebuild program is a program that would provide the gap, $50,000 at low interest, even down to no interest, to help keep jobs and hopefully even create jobs in the economy. Right now, it's in Ukiah, but if there's interest, we would love to expand it.
Great. So if folks want more information on that, contact you. It's probably also available on your website?
Right. Well, basically, the thing, the best thing to do is just call us.
Okay.
We're not really on the internet.
Okay. Supervisor Pinches.
That's for countywide?
City of Ukiah right now.
Oh, just city.
But if the county board is interested, contact us. If you like what you hear, we'll try to do it countywide.
How much money is in that pot?
Right now, Craig just got funded for 500,000.
So you're saying that it's only available as a service to businesses within the city limits of Ukiah?
Right. The city contacted us, Sage contacted Craig, and, you know, it was an idea we had and so we started it with the city and that's where it's at right now, because the grant funding, you always, you're limited to that jurisdiction. So if it's something, you know, we just, we're starting to do a little bit more economic development for the county, working with Steve. So if that's something you're interested in, let us know, let Steve know and we'll see if we can.
Have you had any dialogue with the county on this program yet?
I think we're letting Steve know right now, aren't we?
Yeah, we're just starting to expand, doing economic development.
So we're going to assume Steve will be talking with you.
It sounds like you guys are interested, so we'll talk to Steve and see what we can do for that.
Just a discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, returning to the board for an action? We've had public comment?
We'll accept the report.
Accept the report? Does anyone want to make?
Well, you can just give your.
We can just give direction. It's fine with me.
We received the report.
There's actually two actions.
Two actions, Supervisor?
The first action is on 6C.
Two items. Yeah. So, absolutely.
Okay.
So that is a totally separate item.
Okay.
But for this, the chair could simply give direction to accept the report.
So we'll just go ahead and accept the report for item number 6C. Then we're going to go on now to item number 6D. And this is a public hearing and possible action of resolution to close out Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Award 08-PTAG-5361. And we have Mr. Dunlop Cliff from the executive office.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve Dunlop Cliff of the county executive office. Just since I'm here and for, primarily for members of the public, I did want to state that the county does operate a business loan program. And I'm not certain the specific distinction between the county's business loan program and the branded rebuild program that's offered through the city of Ukiah and actually through the CDC on behalf of the city of Ukiah. But the CDC is the appropriate point of contact for the county's existing business loan program, which is active and operable and is actually, in the very recent past, I guess, approved a couple of loans for the community for some great projects. So I wanted to mention that. To this specific agenda item, the CDC operates the county's Community Development Block Grant or CDBG program. In 2009, the county was awarded a $35,000 grant of CDBG funds to be used for grant applications, writing grant applications. As a required step to close out this grant, the board is asked to adopt a resolution approving of the associated final products. I'd like to reintroduce Mr. Craig Schlotter, the Community Development Manager for the CDC, to provide you with additional information on this item.
Great. Thank you. Before we do that, we'll, we're going to go forward with the public hearing notice, because I believe his comments would be under the staff report for the public hearing. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll go to the clerk first to establish proper notice?
Proper notice has been established. Thank you.
Great. Then would the clerk announce any notes, correspondence or telephone calls received?
All correspondence has been distributed.
Great. Thank you. So we're going to move now to Mr. Schlotter to do the staff presentation and this is going to be a summary of the materials provided to the board.
Good morning, members of the board, Madam Chair, Craig Schlotter, Community Development Manager, CDC. I'll make my presentation really brief. As Steve mentioned, this is part of the closeout requirements for this grant, grant number 08-PTAG-5361, Community Development Block Grant funded by the Department of Housing and Community Development, RCD. In the preparation of this grant, the activities that were funded under this grant were the preparation of eight grant applications for activities that benefited the targeted income group, which are individuals or households that have incomes at 80 percent area median income or below. We actually completed nine activities, nine grant applications under this program with the funds available, which is 35,000. The 35,000 invested in the preparation of these grant applications led to over $1.5 million in new funding for the TIG. And as an example of a project funded with the preparation of this, of the grant application, we did receive a 2010, the county received a 2010 CDBG award that is going to provide for new funding for owner-occupied rehabilitation, for multifamily housing rehabilitation and for first-time homebuyer assistance. And I do have an update that the first first-time homebuyer assistance loan was closing today, was funding today. So we're already seeing benefit in this community from the results of this grant. All the applications are available for viewing at the CEO's office and I'd be happy to take any other questions at this time.
So any questions from board members at this time? Supervisor Hamburg?
Yeah, just, Craig, just to get a little, little bit clearer, so there was $35,000 grant which went to pay for the preparation of eight grant applications and there were actually nine prepared.
That's correct.[1671.12]
And, and from those applications, $1.5 million came to Mendocino County to pay for the rehabilitation of owner-occupied homes for people who earn 80% of the median income.
That's partially correct.
Is that basically what happened here?
There was one of the applications that were funded. I was just giving an example of one of the, we actually had, I believe, four funding, funded out of the nine that we wrote. One of those applications was for the activities that I described, just to give you an example of what some of these activities are that are funded. So that grant was a $600,000 grant that was funded.
Okay, so, so basically, how many families were served with this 1.5? Eight families?
It's still, the grants that were written were awarded either this year or last year. So some of the benefit is just now being attained. For example, that first-time homebuyer loan that just closed, that's number one under that, that program. We have, if the board remembers, about a year ago, there was a resolution for some assistance to Anderson Valley Housing Association. That's beginning, bids are being let tomorrow for that project. That's about 30 units of farmworker housing in Boonville. So that'll be.
Is that in Filo?
It's in Boonville. There's Boonville Apartments.
Okay. Craig, what is the median income?
It depends on the household size.
For, say, a family of four in Mendocino County?
I believe it's $46,050.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other questions from board members at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go to public comment. Those wishing to speak, please fill out a form at the back of the room, bring it forward to the clerk, and you'll have three minutes to give comment under the public hearing process. Okay, seeing no one, we will return to staff for any final remarks before returning to the board. Any final comments, Mr. Schlatter?
It's time.
So I will return to the board, and then I will close the public hearing. Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move approval of the resolution.
Well, I have to close the public, I just thought you wanted to make comments. So you want to hold that?
No, I'm just ready for a motion.
Okay. I was just going through the procedure here. It was back to board for questions of staff. Seeing none, then the public hearing is now closed. The matter will now be before the board for a decision. So we'll go to, I guess, Supervisor McCowen.
I move the resolution before us.
Second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor McCowen and a second by Supervisor Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thanks, Craig.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you both. We have a short amount of time before the lunch recess, so I think we'll still have afternoon business, of course, and we have a 1:30 item, and we have some other board business left over from this morning that we did not conduct. But I'd like to go to item number 5N on consent, see if we can finish off the consent calendar. So I'm going to go now to Supervisor McCowen for that item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And we do have our Director of Transportation.
Yes.
Available. My concern is that I think it's extremely unusual that we would spend county road funds for repairs to a city-owned portion of a street, even though it may be a street that is primarily traveled by county residents. And I wonder by what policy we are doing this, and if we are not doing it according to policy, what is the justification for it? And then, does it set a precedent, and where should other cities apply? Because we have numerous county roads that funnel into the cities, and, and so that it's a shared road system. But historically, I think the city repairs the segments within the city, the county repairs the segments within the county. I also question the statement that Sherwood Road is the most heavily-traveled county road, and I would cite the example of North State Street, immediately north of the city limits of the City of Ukiah. And there's certainly a tremendous amount of traffic there, and I think there's a number of others that have heavy traffic as well. But, so, again, I'm not questioning the need for the repairs to be made, but are we setting a precedent that other jurisdictions could come forward and say, "Boy, there's sure a lot of county residents driving on this city road. Won't you help us out?"
Howard DeShiel, Director of County Transportation, through the chair, if I may, I'll try to answer. To the comment about the volume of traffic, I couldn't find current traffic counts that are necessarily the most recent for North State Street and the most recent for Sherwood Road. I will say that in the past, when we've looked at the traffic count data, which sometimes occurs on different years, that Sherwood Road is definitely on a par with North State Street. It's surprising, too, because intuitively, one would think North State Street, South State Street are the most heavily-traveled. Sherwood Road has some very high peaks. They particularly have high peaks on big holiday weekends and things. There's a lot of second homeowners. So it's just surprising. And I know Executive Director Phil Dow at MCOC has made that remark, because he does traffic counts for different jurisdictions through MCOC. And Sherwood Road does have a very high volume. But I couldn't bring counts to prove it this morning. As to Supervisor McCowen's comment to policy, really, I brought this to the board because it is a policy decision. We normally would not spend the county road fund on a city street. In fact, the road commissioner myself couldn't do that. But the Streets and Highway Code does provide that this board can make that decision. So I brought it forward because there was a request from the city manager in Willets, he's here today, Paul Kaler. He wanted it brought forward, so I'm bringing it, and it is a policy decision for this board. And if Mr. Kaler would like to speak, the chair could perhaps let him do that.
Sure, we can hear from Mr. Kaler, and then we have two board members that would like to comment or ask questions.
Madam Chair, board members, staff, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to this item. I just want to speak to the uniqueness of Sherwood Road. It is steep, narrow, and the only access for significant area, the unincorporated area in the Brook Trails Township. I don't think that there is another county road quite like it. If North State Street had a significant failure and was closed to all traffic, there would be alternative routes. That's why last June, after the rainy season last year, we identified significant failure of the roadbed and drainage systems on Sherwood Road. We moved quickly to take action at the City of Willets and actually declared an emergency in order that this project can be completed in the short amount of construction time that we had left between when the urgency was identified and the shortness of the construction season. So I would, I would answer Supervisor McCowen's question is, yes, there are other sections of roadway between the unincorporated area and incorporated cities, but this one is unique. I don't think that you'd be having a presentation regarding the second access in the Brook Trails if there wasn't issues regarding emergency response. And that's where I took my job very seriously, is this was a critical health and safety link. If for some reason during the middle of winter, we're shut down to one lane or both lanes on Sherwood Road close, unincorporated residents would be, their health and safety would be imperiled. So I didn't play politics with it. We just went ahead forward and made, took action to repair the section of roadway in the City of Willets. Let me point out that the City of Willets only has six residents that use this section of roadway. Most of the traffic is coming from the Brook Trails community. And being the person who was up there the last three weeks, actually working on the project with granite construction, and talking to the granite construction travel, or traffic control personnel who work in Middletown, Hoplin, greater parts of Sonoma Lake and Mendocino County, experienced traffic control personnel saying, "This is the craziest traffic control situation that we have ever seen." Because the distance between the Sherwood Road and US-Hot 101 intersection, and to the point where it just becomes very steep and narrow within the, within the Willet City limits, there's nowhere for the traffic to back up. So, in the end, I understand the contribution that was requested, and let me put this forward, is that the Willet City Council requested that the letter be written to the Board of Supervisors asking for a monetary contribution. In the end, the project is going to cost about $267,000. I understand that the contribution that's being recommended is 50. We would gladly accept, you know, that contribution. I think you will, you are, the roadwork is done. And in the end result, two drainage culverts were failing. The two, the one that's near the top of the hill and the one in the middle of the hill, where corrugated metal pipe, they had rusted through, and the roadway and the roadbed was saturated during the wintertime. So we have acted prudently. We did a significantly, significant overlay in the areas of the roadway that were failing, as well as we crack sealed the areas that where there was cracking and failure. You know, I understand policy and the directional policy, but I also understand there are exceptions to every rule. And I would ask that this Board of Supervisors consider Sherwood Road an exception to the normal rule. Thank you very much, and I'd be available to answer questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We'll go now to Supervisor Pinches.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, you know, a chain is only as good as its weakest length. And to compare North State Street with the Sherwood Road is, I don't, as Paul stated, you know, there's plenty of ways, even if a bridge went out on, on North State Street, there's plenty of ways for Egress to get around it or go another route. But on Sherwood Road, there's no, no other route. And just in Brook Trails, there's about 1,400 homes, residences there, and that's not counting up at Third Gate, several subdivisions as the county approved. When they, all these subdivisions, including Brook Trails, when they approved them, it was assumed that they were going to use the Sherwood Road. That was the only plan. And so, you know, I think for us to contribute to that, it's really nice to, you know, we're always spending money on studies. This was done on emergency work, so that basically streamlined the environmental process. So the work is almost complete. It is complete now. So, so the work has been done. Think about if nothing happened in this winter, in a December storm or something, Sherwood Road went out. Then the county would be, we would have to do something. We would have to contribute then, because we'd have 14 residents, just 1,400 residents just in Brook Trails with no way to town. Plus, clear on up, there's a school up at Sherwood. You know, so it would have been a real, and we couldn't, we couldn't even pay the traffic control for six months or a wintertime closure for the amount of this, probably the total project. So I applaud the City of Willets for seeing that they had a potential problem and dealing with it immediately. And I, I would like to see the county at least contribute 30% of the project cost. It's done. There was no additional work that had to be done, so that is actually the cost, 215. Is that right, Paul?
No, when we actually, we did a truncated bidding process where we invited known.
But do you have any change orders?
Yes, we did. The actual total's probably going to come around, out at about 267,000, because in the end, we weren't as successful at sliplining culverts, we actually had to dig in and replace them. So.
But anyways, I just think that this is, like I say, in light of the special circumstances of this, it's, it's really nice to spend money to a project, not on that, to one that's already done, rather than putting money into studies or, you know, with the silly, of Willet's taking the initiative to get in the forefront of this, we alleviate what potentially could be a major problem in Mendocino County. Think about that, if we lost for just, in a winter storm, even one lane of that road, what a problem it would be. We have a problem getting the traffic in and off of Sherwood right now with two lanes. So I think it's, you know, it's not going to, say, a third of this cost is not going to hurt the Department of Transportation. And if it come to a road failure, our Department of Transportation would have to spend more money dealing with just the traffic control, and you couldn't reroute the people, so I don't know what the solution would be. But I just, this is, this is a special circumstance road. I think the traffic count, there's been counts, seven, 9,000 trips a day on that road, depending. But it's, it's the largest residential community in Mendocino County, just Brook Trails, and not counting up at the other subdivision, Second Gate and Third Gate and clear on up to Sherwood Road. So I would, I would like to ask and request that the board make a full 1/3, say, 1/3 of the, of the project cost as a contribution, or say, up to a cap of $65,000.
Supervisor Hamburg?
Well, you know, I was with Johnny until he wanted to increase the amount. You know, the 50 signed it good, and that's what we were requesting. And now, you know, in the heat of the moment, to bump it up to 65,000 is not exactly my cup of tea. But the other thing, and this should be, I'm just stating the obvious, this is a policy item, as Howard acknowledged, so it does not belong on the consent calendar. So in the future, we should not bring policy issues to the consent calendar. But I have no problem with, with approving this as requested, but I'm going to have to have my arm twisted a little bit more to come up with more than 50 grand.
Well, why don't you stop and make a motion right there, then?
Yeah. That'd be a good idea.
Supervisor Hamburg, I mean Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, no one denies the, the need for the project or that it was prudent for the city to proceed. And in fact, that was their responsibility to do so, and they've done so. The project's been completed. And with this $50,000, what else could we do on a county section of road? We've got, is it a $500 million backlog?
570 million is the identified backlog log.
So, you know, 50,000 isn't going to do much to that list one way or the other, but the point is, we do have a lot of unmet needs on our county-owned road system. And, you know, I do think it sets a precedent. And you, Supervisor Pinches, you refer to the county approving these subdivisions, and that's certainly contributed to the traffic congestion on Sherwood Road. The same could be said for East Ukiah, where the county, over the last 20 or 30 years, has approved a huge number of subdivisions, some small, some large. And it's all gone to creating a tremendous traffic congestion problem on East Perkins, East Goby, Talmage. And with Perkins, every time it rains any amount at all, it closes off a lane because they've got inadequate drainage. 50,000 would go a long way towards solving that problem. And the reason you need Perkins to be four lanes is largely to accommodate the traffic from the subdivisions that were approved out in the county, approved by the county, creating a problem for the city. So it looks to me like this is an invitation to the city to come forward and ask for $50,000. So, you know, I just think we need to be very mindful of the fact that we are very likely creating a precedent here. And I certainly agree with Supervisor Hamburg, this should not have been on consent, given that it is a policy discussion. So I'm not going to belabor the point. I think I can probably count, but I, although it's a worthwhile project, I will not support it based on the issue of setting a precedent.
Let's go to the CEO.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make two comments, really. One is that in working with Director Dashiel, the Executive Office did see this as an urgent item and truly a critical access issue for residents in Mendocino County. And had there been a problem with that road and the City of Willets not identified it and fixed it before the weather got bad, it could have been a much, much greater issue for the residents of Mendocino County. With that said, I would also like to say that the Executive Office is to blame for this going on the consent calendar rather than being a regular item. Clearly, we were rushing and we were looking at this as an urgency item. We put it on consent. I agree with Director Dashiel, it's a policy item and it should have been a regular item. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have at least three board members that want to continue to comment, but I'm going to go to Mr. Bigfoot for public comment. So this will be the public comment time on this item, then we will return to the board.
Thank you, Chair. Louis, thank you, Carmel, for your observations on that road. That road is a 911. That whole Brook Trails subdivision is, when it was put together, the whole entire impact, environmental impact was never studied. It was, it's basically illegal. The lot size is illegal by today's standards. The access is illegal, the water is misjudged. I mean, the entire subdivision is in trouble. I mean, it has potential of having 4,000 homes. They've argued from 6,000 down to 4,000. I don't know where that number is today. But basically, that is a county road. It's regretful that the city has to pick up a dime. Every car that goes up that road is a county. I'm one of the aggravated people that drive up that road. I have to tell you right now, if that had not been repaired and the water had continued to go over the edge, it would knock out the entire road. The road is not even in illegal width. There is no shoulder on either side. And in fact, the MCOC was here, they did a study, they projected the cars at that time, this is like a year, two years ago, 15,000 cars a day, and it may be more, in growing because the rental units up there are full and chugging. And I have to thank you for allowing to give the 30,000, 50,000 to Paul, because it really is a county road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bigfoot. Any other public members that wish to comment on this item before we return to the board? Okay, seeing none, I'll go back to Supervisor Pinches.
Just real quick, and Paul mentioned about they couldn't sleeve one of the culverts. And the reason, because in the middle of the road where the culvert was attached, it was actually separated. So you would have had a winter failure this winter as soon as you got a lot of water flowing. I mean, it wasn't a question of if it would happen, it would have happened if we went through another wet season. So the urgency of it certainly was, was appropriate. But Madam Chair, with that, to move this along, I'm going to make a motion to, for the recommended motion, the amount of 50,000.
Second?
Second by Supervisor Pinches and a second by Supervisor Brown.
Correct.
So let's go to a discussion on the motion. We'll go to Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you. Well, again, no one is questioning the need for the work to be done. The only question is who should pay for it? And we actually have a regional transportation planning agency for the county. I really think the request would more appropriately have been made to the Mendocino Council of Governments to see which funding stream, if any... Governments to see which funding stream, if any, could funds be identified for this project. And the only other comment that I'd like to make is, it's not accurate to describe this item before us as an urgency item. Doing the work was an urgency item to prevent the failure of the road. This action, to discuss how we pay for a project that has already been completed, is not an urgency item.
Nobody said it was.
The CEO just said it was. This was an urgency item, that's why it wound up on consent. So with that, we should vote.
Well, I'd like to comment first, Supervisor. I agree with you, it's not an urgency item in the sense that we refer to it. I think emergency repairs or emergency actions by the City of Willets is the accurate, probably the accurate way to describe it, and that is what the agenda title is. You know, this is clearly one of those, that the developer should've been required to enlarge that road before that subdivision ever went in, the developer there should've been required to do a lot of things, but they didn't happen, and that's unfortunate. And I would like to think today that if we had a similar project going in, that there would be lots of things the developer would be required to do, so we don't have to have the city and the county trying to struggle to make adaptations for something that really resulted out of poor planning. I really do agree with Supervisor McCowen on the essence of this. It really is, is, there's no policy associated with it, it's taking an action, it's not an emergency action, but it, it is trying to respond to an emergency repair that was done by another entity. But I do think we also have to work as partners, and I, you know, I think this is a unique situation. I really don't like handling things in this manner, I think we should have a policy, we should have a policy review process, we have reviews of this type. What's the appropriate funding mechanism, as Supervisor McCowen said, would this be an appropriate one to go to MCOT? Don't know. Usually, MCOT funding takes quite a bit of time to identify and recover and obtain, so I don't know if it would work under an emergency repair situation such as this. But on balance, I'll go ahead and support it. I really hope that all entities, all supervisory districts, would get equal consideration as this has, if they had a similar item to come before us, and I hope we don't really see these. And I'm glad Supervisor Pinches, that you made the motion for the, as stated in the agenda summary, the fifty thousand, I can support that. But I don't think I would, you wouldn't be able to twist my arm, as I think Supervisor Hamburg was referring to, to get any additional dollars. I think we just need to go forward with it as it is. Supervisor Pinches?
Just a quick comment, you mentioned how maybe another supervisory district would get the same regard as far-
Wow.
You've never seen this supervisor vote against any road project in Mendocino County.
I, I know.
Anyplace, whether it's in my district or elsewhere in the county.
Understood. Okay, let's go ahead and vote by the buttons, please.
Motion passes with Supervisor McCowen dissenting.
Great, thank you very much. And at the time of ten minutes past twelve, we'll adjourn to lunch, returning to open session at one-thirty.
Paul.
Board returning after the lunch hour, and we will go right to our afternoon item. It was a timed item. This is Agenda Item 7A, received presentation and results of supplemental feasibility study, Project Phase One, and possible adoption of resolution designating applicable routes for further study, Department of Transportation Agreement Number 100086, Brook Trail Second Access, Preliminary Engineering Phase One, the Brook Trails area. We'll go to the Department of Transportation to sponsor.
Good morning, Madam, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Bob Parker, Assistant Director of Transportation, and I'm the project manager for this one, Brook Trail Second Access. And with us today, we have Craig Drake, who's the project manager for the firm DHA, and Howard Dashill, our director, will have some comments towards the end. If you recall, the original feasibility study for this project was done by KOA Corporation, and the project report was finished in two thousand nine, September two thousand nine. One of the recommendations stemming from that presentation was to reinstate a couple of the routes that had been deleted from further investigation at the rather onset of that particular study, those being what we now call the Furco Hall Road Alternative and Alternative A, which has egress to the south to twenty from Brook Trails. The current effort through the Drake Haglen Associates, our consultant, was to look at a supplemental, as the first phase, look at a supplemental study to include Altern, Alternative A and the Furco Hall Road Alternative, and to do a peer review of the results from the previous study. Drake Haglen and Associates has done an outstanding job, they've been our consultant on a couple of other projects, and as they typically do, a very thorough and understandable work project, product. As far as this afternoon, we're gonna hear a presentation from Craig Drake. It'll be an updated presentation from one that was done back on the eleventh of October at Brook Trails. It started out as a community information meeting, and then we went to the meeting of the Board of Directors for Brook Trails and public comments, so we got quite a few updated public comments, we got quite a few in the original study, quite a few updated ones. And one aspect of that is, one of the project, one of the sets of public comments had to do with recommendation to consider yet another alternate, which would be a hybrid of routes I and H. And Mr. Drake will briefly address that towards the end of his presentation, and I would recommend and request to the board to give some presenter from the originator of that recommendation a little more time than the usual case, just to go over the aspects of that hybrid. And Mr. Drake will also mention, I'm sure that they looked at the original recommended IH hybrid, and they did some, just some minor amount of effort on that to show probably a much better alignment, which would still entail the basic attributes of that IH alternative. And just kind of in closing, this is not an easy project. There's a whole bunch of possible alternatives, it's in some terrain that is challenging, it's going to be quite an expensive undertaking, there's a strong indication now that we don't have as much funding in this phase as we really would like to have in the preliminary engineering phase. However, again, the consultant has done a great job thus far, and will, I'm sure will continue to do so with this. I'll turn it over to Mr. Drake.
Thanks, Bob. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name's Craig Drake, I'm a consulting engineer with Drake Haglen Associates, and we were asked to do the supplemental feasibility study, as Bob indicated. We're gonna run through just a real brief summary of what was done in the KOA study, that's the KOA Corporation, not to be confused with the campground over there. The supplemental study objectives, for the objectives for this particular study, the, we're gonna look again at the project purpose and need to make sure we all have a good understanding of what the project purpose and need is. The alignments that were added to the study being the alignments A and Furco that Bob just mentioned, we'll go over the aspects of those, or the features of those with respect to environmental and geotechnical, the traffic patterns that we expect for all alignments, the ranking process that we went through, the cost estimates, and some recommendations at the end. Now, the KOA study looked at basically five alignments, all coming down the eastern slope of the hill toward the, toward the one-on-one corridor. The KOA study recommended alignments I and B, which if you recall, are tying in, well, I ties in at the new roundabout proposed for the bypass, runs up Brook Trails to Poppy Drive, or Primrose up here. Alignment B that they recommended actually ties into Sherwood further down the hill, outside of the Brook Trails township, and then kinda just cuts over parallel with Sherwood Road, Sherwood Road being this road here, coming the backbone of Brook Trails, coming down to Highway one-on-one right at the high school. The, the two additional alignments were added at the request of the board, Alignment A being a southern alignment that ties into Highway twenty, and Alignment, the so-called Furco Hall Road Alignment, which is a northerly alignment that comes around the top of Brook Trails. Again, we wanted to compare all the study alignments at the end of this, we would include A and Furco, and then compare all alignments to one another once again to come up with a ranking. Now, the project purpose and need is basically paraphrased here as two, two components to it, providing a reliable connection, second connection, mainly for public safety reasons, emergency responders and evacuations, and this is kind of an important point, we'll get into this a little later, about the difference between emergency response and evacuation, and then the local traffic circulation deficiency that's been recognized in the general plan and the Brook Trail specific plan for many years. Just a little brief synopsis of what the right-of-way looks like, it's a sixty-foot right-of-way with a roadway forty foot, or a thirty-six-foot paved roadway width is what we're using in our planning studies, consistent with Mendocino County standards. Okay, some of the features of the highway, or the Alignment A, there's two, at the top at Brook Trails, there's two alternatives, ways of tying into Primrose Drive. Down at the bottom, they converge here and come down into Highway twenty near the, that's the KOA campground right in here. These, these were not included in the, in the KOA study, mainly because it was felt at the time that it didn't meet purpose and need, that according to the Brook Trail specific plan that had been updated in the late nineties or early two thousands, the Brook Trails Board had decided this would be a great location for a third access after establishing a second access that went down toward the Highway one-on-one bypass. The Furco Hall Road Alignment consists of one alignment that goes from the, well, it doesn't show it on here, but it'll go down and tie into that roundabout that's part of the bypass, comes up and kinda parallels one-on-one, then heads up, up the hill. Alignment E tying directly into Sherwood, and then a couple of options with Alignment F tying in near the airport, and Alignment D tying into Poppy Drive. These were all analyzed as kind of separate alignments, because they're different lengths and they have different challenges as far as an engineering and building, you know, construction goes. This one was not included, the Furco was not included in the original KOA study either, the project development team had determined that was just too far north to really satisfy the purpose and need of the project, so these two alternatives have been added back in. Now, just a brief review of some of the environmental constraints or the environmental features of these two added alternatives. Furco Alignment's going to have an impact on Spotted Owl, and it's going to trigger some Spotted Owl studies, whereas Alignment A would not. Alignment A will have more impact on Salmon and Steelhead because of Mill Creek, you know, Furco, more biological impacts to plants, comparable impacts to wetlands, but the bottom line was, we found that there's really no deal breakers in either one of these alignments. Both of them are feasible and could be built from an environmental standpoint, it's just a matter of mitigation and permitting as, as normal. Geotechnical issues, we had our geotech look at these alignments. Furco's got a few challenges, some steep terrain, some slope movement that's been indicated in the past, the large mapped landslide near Highway one that may cause some challenges during design, and close to a possible earthquake fault trace. Alignment, and here's the, just a visual of, here's your Willets Airport here, Highway one-on-one over here, and then Furco comes up around the top of Brook Trails here. These are large landslide, or suspected landslide, features that have been mapped and, and recorded in, in other documents over the years, and this would need to be studied a little bit further for what, how stable that slope actually is today. There's also a fault, fault trace that's been identified coming up through this area. Now Alignment A, geotechnical issues, really has moderate slopes, probably a lot better from a construction standpoint, however, there is active springs and high groundwater up there near the top, but that can be mitigated through different construction techniques. There's some springs, active springs up here in the, in the top coming down the hill. Other than that, there's just a couple of areas of some disturbed surface that they saw, nothing of, of real note here, so very feasible from a geotechnical standpoint. Now, as we looked at the KOA study for the other alignments that were, were studied, we noticed that many of the alignments gathered around, again, to orient you, here's the airport, here's the Highway one-on-one bypass, Sherwood Road is coming up in through, through here, and then here's all our alignments that were studied in the KOA, C, G, H, I, and B. Now, there's a big landslide area here that was mapped and identified in the KOA study, but it was kind of glossed over as, as well, we'll deal with that later. But we do want to point out that it does have some evidence of being active, and it does cross an awful lot of fault lines in through here, and there's a couple of bridges that are present on these alignments. In fact, there's, on Alignment I, there's two, there need two bridges along this, this area where there's a slide and an earthquake fault, and the CG and H alignments have a bridge that's neither, crossed up creek. Okay, now into the, the traffic patterns. Now, we looked at the traffic analysis that was done for the, for the original study, the KOA study, and it was based largely on existing traffic counts, and it really didn't get into trying to forecast or, or predict which road would, you know, how much of the traffic each, each road would take. Well, we decided that it was probably best to try and get into that a little bit. So, hold on, let's go through this a little bit, see if, if I can explain this well. These are the traffic counts, right now you've got about eight thousand cars a day traveling Sherwood Road down here near the high school. Of that seven, of that eight thousand, they, they put counters up here and up here, and you lost about fifty percent of the traffic between these two counters, and of another fifty percent of the traffic between these two, which indicates that the traffic is going into the Brook Trail subdivision along those points. Now, if you look at the Sherwood Road backbone, there's fourteen intersections, or fourteen places that vehicles can enter the road, and so we looked at this, and there's some pretty distinct points, and there's some pretty distinct features about these intersection points. And what we did was, we looked at the, and you can see the colors here, it doesn't come out too well on this screen, but like the red are generally intersections that would feed from this area here. Blue, intersections that would feed traffic from this area, likewise, green, and then the darker colors down here. What we found is that we did a traffic, or we did a study with how many residential developments exist in each of these zones, and interestingly enough, we find that it's a pretty good split between each zone, with about fifty percent of the development above this line and fifty percent below this line, so you got your northeast area and your southwest area. One thing that should be noted is, and so, and so therefore, there's about a fifty-fifty traffic split between this. One thing that should be noted is, is everybody coming out of D, and most of the traffic coming out of C, makes a decision right at this intersection right here, which is a decision point on whether to go up Primrose, or to go up, I think it's Brook, Birch or Brook Trails, to get out of the subdivision and over to Sherwood. So, we started looking at proportions of traffic that may use these, these alignments. Alignment A, since you have to come through this intersection, it's not so convenient for people up in this region to get, find their way all the way back down here to A, and so you'll see in a minute how we went through a, an exercise to come up with the estimates of traffic that it would capture, and so we're, we're assuming that it would take about twenty-five percent of the traffic, the existing traffic, off of Sherwood if we put Alignment A in. Likewise, for Furco, excuse me, Furco would draw from these top two zones, people would have to make a decision when they hit Sherwood Road, whether they wanted to come over here and go down to one-on-one on the new alignment, or just make the other turn, go in the other way, and come down Sherwood Road. And you would probably capture about half the traffic coming down Sherwood from upstream above, above Brook Trails, probably drawing about thirty-five percent of the traffic off of the current Sherwood Road of that eight thousand cars a day. Road of that 8,000 cars a day. Likewise, for CG and H, now, these are the alignments, of course, from the KOA study. These end up going back north and kind of over a couple of hills, and it doesn't give a very attractive option to Sherwood Road. And so, what happens is when the traffic is already committed to Sherwood Road, we feel it's unlikely that they would divert and take that route around. Of course, all of these traffic assumptions are highly dependent on driver behavior, travel times, and things like that that are just beyond the scope of this study, but would certainly be going into in-depth in the next phase of the project. Alignment I, since it is almost, well, not almost, but it's, it very much goes in the same direction as Sherwood, takes traffic down to 101, we feel that of all these zones, only D, well, even D has to come here and make a decision, and they can come up Primrose and head down this alignment. It has the potential to attract about 50% of the traffic off of Sherwood. Well, you know, we've kind of modified that a little bit. It'll take about 75% of the Brook Trails traffic, about 50% of all the traffic coming down Sherwood, including the northern. So, in a kind of a pictorial sense, what we did was we estimated, like, for example, Alignment A, this is an assumption that 5% of the traffic from these upper zones would make their way down there to use that. Most of Zone D would use it, 5% of, you know, the traffic further up on Sherwood would use it, resulting in 23%. Likewise, for all of these different alternatives, that's the kind of exercise we went through. Graphically, it's represented here, where of course Alignment B, being basically just a parallel alignment down at the bottom of the hill, would attract the most with then I, Furco, A, and the other alignments ranking down there. And so, here's your distribution right here of traffic. Now, after going through the environmental and geotechnical and the traffic, then we wanted to go back and look at the performance criteria and the rankings of these alignments. Now, we kind of took the purpose and need statement, and we looked at the features that are important to satisfy that purpose and need. And what we're looking for in a feasibility study are alignments that are assessed as reasonable, prudent, and practical. You know, it's not an exercise of a feasibility study to weed out everything, but we can't take everything into an environmental document. So, the purpose of a feasibility study is to find those that are reasonable, prudent, and practical, and that's a statement right out of the President's Commission on Environmental Justice, I believe. Anyway, the purpose and need statement, then, the first part of it had to do with emergency response, and we recognize that there's two types of emergency response. There's the type of emergency response that's required when Sherwood Road is closed. Let's say there's a tree down or there's been a bad accident and people just can't get by it for a while. That's an emergency situation, and Brook Trails residents will need to have another viable route for emergency vehicles and for regular traffic to bypass it for short periods of time. Those are a lot more common than the disasters, the natural disasters that may require evacuation of the area. Now, when it comes to evacuation of the area, you know, that's already been addressed, of course. Brook Trails has roads identified, routes identified, that can be pressed into service given an emergency situation. So, we've kind of separated in our performance criteria or our selection, we've kind of separated the idea of what's an emergency response route and how well does a route serve that, and how well does a route serve an evacuation. It's very difficult to judge how a route serves an evacuation because we don't know where the disaster's going to be, and so, it's unpredictable. All we can say is that ones that kind of separate you from the other ways out are probably going to be better than having two that are just right next to each other. Okay, so, we have the screening criteria, which are factors that are basically some of the characteristics of the routes, and we compare them one against the other to see which one is more important, to come up with our weighting factors that you'll see that we use in our next slide. It turns out that regular use as a secondary route, which is part of the purpose and need, satisfies the general plan and the Brook Trails specific plan, comes out on top, followed by the emergency access, and then on down from there. Then we take each individual alignment, A, B, C, all the Furco, and we give them a score on how well they satisfy each one of those criteria. Those are then multiplied by the weight to give a weighted score, which is then summed up to come up with a relative ranking between the alternatives. You know, we're just looking for relative rankings between alternatives. And how that plays out then is graphically, that Furco Hall Road did well for a couple of different reasons, and then, of course, Alternative I. B, which was the other recommended alignment in KOA study, comes out to be about equivalent with A. But what we're looking for here is the trend and a gap, and we're looking at a big gap between these four, five alternatives and these two on top. So, we focused on these two on top as being satisfying the purpose and need best according to the ranking criteria that we gave it. Now, one thing that you'll not see in the criteria rankings is cost, because we don't want to be influenced by cost right up front. I mean, if we're just going for the cheapest alternative, that would be a fairly easy exercise to go through. But you can't ignore cost, and so, at the end of the day, we look at the cost of all the alternatives to see how that plays out. And the Alternative I, well, the cheapest alternatives are going to end up being A or B naturally because those are the shortest routes through probably the easier terrain to build in, whereas your most expensive would be that C alignment that came way, wound it way over the top of the hills and kind of meandered in through there. That's the most expensive. Alternative I is a middle-range alternative in terms of cost, as is some of the Furco alternatives. And so, we're focusing on I and the Furco as being generally the ones that we would recommend for further study. And there it is in a tabular form for all those, if you want to get into the nitty-gritty of how that breaks down. So, I and Furco come out recommended because they score highest, they offer effective traffic choices, they both tie into the Highway 101 bypass, which is an important feature of the traffic circulation models, and most importantly, they're reasonable, prudent, and practical alternatives. Now, we presented this to the Brook Trails Community Services District Board of Directors on the 11th of October. And coming out of that meeting, we had at least, well, we had a couple of significant comments that asked us to look at the possibility of including a hybrid alignment. Now, we were just tasked, you know, with this supplemental study to just include A and Furco, but the Department of Transportation said, hey, this has, this looks like it has some merit to look at another alignment that came out of that October 11th meeting, which is a hybrid of H and I. In other words, it would have the same termination, well, we don't show Sherwood here very well, but it would tie into Sherwood where I ties into Sherwood. It would tie into the roundabout down here at Highway 101, but it wouldn't come through the up creek valley, if you will. It would run up toward the, well, it would just follow Alignment H. So, we went ahead and looked at that, but determined that, you know, H is not, H had its own problems from that other study. It actually goes up over the top of a hill. You have to come from this point here, you have to climb up a couple hundred feet and back down. So, we took a look at it and felt that there's a better alternative that just skirts around this hill here, and it's a much better profile grade, and you can see that from here. This is the, if we go I and then the original H, there's that hill that you have to climb and come back down, and by moving it down the side of the hill, you get a much better, more well-behaved profile. We then put it into the scoring matrix as we did with the rest of them to see how it would score, and it ended up coming in right underneath Alternative I, and there's still a good gap there. So, perhaps, you know, perhaps an HI hybrid alignment would be appropriate for further study as we go forward. That's totally up to the decision makers here. The costs, it was thrown into the costs, you can see there's the Furco alignments, all those three alternatives, there's A over here. Here's the new one that we threw in, HI. Without getting into a lot of detail, it basically proportions well in between I and H being in between the two, so it kind of makes sense there. So, that's where that was left, and that's pretty much it. We have our recommendation in our report, but then we have this added HI alignment, which I think Howard will be addressing.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen, the board, Howard DeShield, Director of Transportation. Staff is here and the consultant to answer your questions, but might be good to hear from the public first.
Any questions from board members before we begin on the initial report? Supervisor McCollum?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With Option A, it's the current official position, I think, that that doesn't fulfill purpose and need because it doesn't satisfy the traffic congestion relief, is that in a nutshell?
Yeah, the original Furco study had eliminated that, the project development team had eliminated that as not meeting purpose and need, and I think that that probably is still a valid comment, that being part of the traffic circulation plan, being part of the purpose and need, that spelled out pretty well that it should hook up to the Highway 101 bypass.
And then, in terms of the traffic circulation aspect for these other alignments, whether it's Furco, I, or modified IH, I think it's pretty clear, I has a significant traffic congestion relief, but do we have statistics for what percentage of the traffic is going to hit Sherwood Road at or above these different intersection points? That is, is Furco so far up that it doesn't fulfill traffic congestion relief?
Yeah, that's a good question, and that remains to be seen. As I mentioned, it really depends on driver behavior, travel times, and perceived savings of time if there's congestion down at Sherwood and 101.
But most people aren't going to drive uphill before they drive downhill. Some will, but...
Well, you know, you need to consider Sherwood doesn't connect into the 101 bypass. If you go down Sherwood and you're heading for a 101, you've got to make the decision, am I going to backtrack down on Old Highway 101 to get to the roundabout, or am I going to backtrack a little bit on Sherwood and go down and get me right into the roundabout? So, there's some driver behavior and travel time parameters that need to be studied, and there's some great traffic modeling software out there. We just haven't been able to apply it to this, it's still beyond the scope of this particular study.
But the official recommendation is still to proceed with Furco, with I, and with the no-alternative.
Mm-hmm.
And not IH. But if we're going to be making an informed decision on which of these we're going to be going with, we kind of need to know some kind of guesstimate on what percentage of the affected drivers are likely to access one or the other of these. Isn't that an important part of it?
We showed that, we had, what, 35?
Well, you had the blocks of this many people live in this area. I'm not sure that told me this many drivers are going to use one alignment or another.
That was this, that was this one right here, where we're looking at 34% would use Furco, and these numbers are independent of each other. In other words, 34% would use Furco or, you know, instead of Sherwood, none of the other alignments are there. Okay, so, we're looking at Alignment I, 48%, Alignment B, 50%, Furco, 34%, A, 23%.
And you didn't have an opportunity to assess modified IH?
We assume that modified IH would draw the same traffic as I because it has the same terminus on either end.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could add through the chair, the recommended motion was written three weeks, obviously, before the meeting. We, the IH, alternative, modified IH, came up later. The board could certainly amend the motion, you know, to include that, you know, we, that information came late, so we're open to that.
Then, do we have a cost estimate of what that would do? If we stayed with the recommended motion and added IH, what would that add to the cost of the study?
I through the chair again. I think there'll be a detailed discussion of cost when we come back to the board to do the second phase, the contract amendment, which will be the second phase. When you approved the first phase of the work, it was put out there that we would have to come back to you with a more exact scope and cost. So, those would need to be negotiated. In fact, they're part of the resolution before you today that, to direct the staff to go back and do that. So, we don't have those exact costs, but I believe it's safe to say that, you know, the more we study, the more it'll cost, and we probably already have more project to study than we have existing funds for. So, I think what we should do and what we've striven to do, if that's a word, what we strive to do with this report is find the best alternatives that accomplish the project we want to accomplish, that allow us to meet those stated goals, which are improved circulation and an emergency second egress. And then, once we decide what's really best, what really makes sense, as the consultant said, there's really no fatal flaws with any of them, but this weighting system he's applied, I think, is valid science. Admittedly, not the final science, but for this stage to make that decision, we'll come back to you of costs in probably a month or two. And that'll be your next decision point when you approve a contract amendment for Phase Two.
Thank you.
Mrs. DeShield, while we have this slide up on the traffic summary, could you delineate where the IH, the modified is?
Sure. I'll stand up. It's, this is the one that Brook Trails came up with. Craig, go to that next slide or that bottom side and add yours. A little bit of an adjustment. So, here's, this one in blue is the modified IH, and then he looked at the one in pink to take out the 200 feet of grade. So, right now, we're saying that either one of those IHs probably would draw the same traffic as I, so it could be substituted for I.
So, you're saying there are two IH-modifieds? The pink is, what is the pink?
We, you know, it's interesting that, the process we're in right now is a feasibility study. The next phase we want to go to is the environmental impact report. And often, you know, this part of the work is done by the engineers. We, for probably hundreds of years, just sat in our offices and studied things, and then we'd roll out to the public what we thought should be done. Recently, there's been a trend for the engineers to kind of open up this process, this initial feasibility study, cost-benefit, as we used to call it, and get some early on public input. Now, while that might be long and tedious, I think it yields some really good results. It's called context-sensitive solutions. It's trying to get some input from the public. So, you know, all I can say is that even when you start out to study a project, like, let's say you started with Alignment IH, the blue one, you might at the end of your design process as an environmental process have adjusted it because that's part of the sequel process. You design, you find problems, you make adjustments, you make, you know, modifications to mitigate for what you find. So, you might say that we could study between the blue line and the purple line and, you know, try to flush out the very best thing and still call it Alignment IH, if that makes sense.
Okay. Supervisor pitches.
Howard, are we going to have enough in this $459,000 CTC grant to cover through the Phase Two feasibility study?
No, I don't believe we will, and we're discovering that more and more as we get into this work. And, you know, like I said, we'll be able to bring that to you exactly when we bring back a contract amendment. We'll probably either have to look at phasing, even the PE phase, and look for augmentation funds, or, you know, make some decisions at that time.
Supervisor McCollum?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for clarification, the blue line IH is the one suggested by Mr. Orth, and the purple is the one that the consultant has developed.
Certainly, and he did... And he did that over a couple of days, I might add. I got to hand it to him.
Okay. The suggestion was made, I believe, by you, Mr. DeShield, that we go now to public comment, and then certainly we will be back with more questions and more discussion. So I'll go first to Tony Orth.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors. Boy, spending 30 years on the project development team for the Willets bypass helped me understand segmented planning, which is really what you're doing. You're looking at an alphabet. And the design I came up with actually uses the same Primrose Drive interchange section off Sherwood Road and not this blue line that comes down to Brook Trails Drive. So they share in common, I and IH, both the beginning phase of off Sherwood Road and the tie-in to the 101 corridor roundabout interchange. Those are in common in IH and I. I really do like the, he said I spent a few days, I spent a few weeks, actually, and part of a lifetime on this project, starting in 1985. Now, I'll read my comments that I prepared, and then I'll make a few other comments. This planning program to provide a scoping process as part of arriving at the alignments for the Brook Trails Second Access Engineering Study. I was the principal author of the Brook Trails comments. I appreciate this opportunity to apply the training Janet and I received from the Union of Concerned Scientists for Transportation Activists in 1984, and the three decades of working as the Brook Trails represented on the U.S. 101 bypass of Willets project development team. Today, you will designate the study routes that will receive further study to determine a new roadway connecting the existing population present along the Sherwood Road corridor that is the most active roadway in the county's circulation system. Since 1985, when the Brook Trails Board first presented the Mendocino Board of Supervisors with a petition with 300 signatories, when Brook Trails had 500 homes serviced by Sherwood Road, we then began to pursue this critical second access project for the health and safety for our constituents. The comments approved by the Brook Trails Township Board reflect the accumulated meetings and comments from all parties as we search for a designated build route to accomplish the purpose and needs of our Mendocino citizens. The Brook Trails comments requested three alternatives move into the next stage of review and comparative study. Alternate modified I, FERCO E, and the new hybrid modified IH, as described by your consultant, actually. Each of these routes terminate at the new county road that today, later on your agenda, you will pass the resolution executing Caltrans relinquishment agreement to accept that portion of Old Highway 101. That is the start of the new roadway to Sherwood Road. Over the last three decades, in the start and stop activities to design and approve this U.S. 101 bypass of Willets, our local representatives have helped bring about the Northern Gateway interchange with its roundabout feature. This was requested under the 1997 Senate Transportation Bill 45 that directs Caltrans to develop appropriate interregional connections when designing new segments of the state and interstate circulation system. Early in the planning efforts of this U.S. 101 bypass of Willets, it was determined that a Central Valley Route 20 interchange would require the county to build alternative A as a second access to Brook Trails. That this would raise many growth inducement issues for Brook Trails in the east side of the Little Lake Valley. Commercial development on the new Route 20 would compete with Main Street and Willets and set up the competition for sales tax revenue so common between counties and cities. This Mendocino Board of Supervisors can today move us forward in relieving the existing population needs as serviced by Old Sherwood Road and acting favorably to the Brook Trails Township comments and rejecting Route A from further study and adopting routes FERCO E, modified I, and the new hybrid of modified IH, along with the no-build option, to allow for the comparative analysis that will demonstrate the opportunities and constraints for these four alternatives in the draft engineering study and move us forward in improving the health and safety of our communities. So that's my statement. It's basically, this is just a SEQA aspect of moving forward where we do indeed, as he mentioned, the requirements are, if this is a viable build alternative, it needs to be weighed equally with the FERCO and Route I. And I do believe that being in between the routes, it has potential to be less environmentally damaging to the operations of both the ranch, offer some mighty fine view sheds of the new mitigation lands of the North Valley, of the Little Lake Valley, will be very attractive to drivers, and a very functional road system. I believe, I won't get into comparative values of the others because the whole purpose of moving forward with this evaluation is to do that, collect public comments once that draft comes out, which will then guide us to a preferred selected route for the next phase. And I do think, because of the economic times, that phasing this project is only appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Edwards, followed by Hal Wagonette.
Hi, my name's Mark Edwards. I'm from Redwood Valley. I manage a ranch property that most of those alignments on the map go through. And just as a comment, I don't think any of the alignments that go up the Up Creek Valley make any sense. It's geologically unstable. There's endangered plant animal species. All the approaches that go down the highway where they go down there are steep precipitous ground with a lot of slide. And I think that the studies don't do a very good job of indicating how tough it's going to be to build those roads. But really, I'm here today to talk about, I think you need to study alternatives A and B. You know, purpose and need, that's a loosely defined term. And I don't know what it means, but if it's the county paying for it, it ought to be the most boom for the buck that the county can get with its dollars. Not necessarily, purpose and need should be narrowly conscripted or defined by what Brook Trails wants, or what some group of people from Brook Trails want. And I would argue, if this was my world, and it was my money I was spending, I would necessarily always consider the least expensive options. A and B are plainly least expensive to build than any of the other alternatives. Heck, you could build A and B for less than the cost of building the I. So, I mean, I think this is a really interesting study, but I think it really just kind of defines what they wanted to define, which is, we want something that goes up Up Creek Valley and ties into Brook Trails in the right spot. And that makes sense. That's the purpose and need that we see as being important. To me, it's a bigger issue. A and B are potentially environmentally superior. They're feasible. They're less expensive. And, you know, for me, at a county, I don't see how you can throw them out because I don't think the situation in our government's going to get any better with regard to funding. I think you need to be thinking about all possible alternatives. Let's say we only have $5 million. Well, we could build A. You could never build I. You could never build any of those other alternatives. And I think to somehow use a social matrix that says all these other different factors, well, at some point, they'll just be glad to get a road. And if our goal here is to get a road that serves the people of Mendocino County better, I think you need to study A and B. And I also wanted to point out, in previous testimony, we had provided letters from several fire departments, Little Lake Fire and Cal Fire, encouraging you to study A because they thought it was a very viable and superior alternative for emergency service access to the Brook Trails Township area. And I think that that's something that's been, we've kind of forgotten about the notion of EMS services or what the impact of the new alternative should be on EMS providers. And I think that that should be given more weight in the decision. I thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wagonette.
Madam Chair, Supervisors. I speak from a sort of special point of view, having sat where you are and made these sorts of decisions, but also as a neighbor to this project and having lived in Brook Trails for 18 years before that. So I know something about the area. I'll use my own little later pointer. Ah, there we go. Sherwood Road basically runs up like this. And this is the Brook Trails' second entrance, as we call it, where, and in point of fact, traffic that comes down from up above, or from this part of Brook Trails, or from this part of Brook Trails, it only can hit Sherwood Road at two points. One is right here, and the other one is down a little lower here at Birch. Now, I lived in the Birch area, and I can tell you that if the intersection were here, rather than drive about almost two miles down to Willets and face congestion on the other end, I would far rather, and everybody else in this area and this area here would far rather go to this point for a congestion-free ride past the town. Point of fact, that's where you're going to get your usage. I think this board has an obligation to consider, primarily as the previous speaker just said, a better road for the citizens of Mendocino County. This board, not this board, not these people, but when Brook Trails was coming into existence in 1960, it failed to require that that be done. It was conceived as a vacation village, but today it's home to 3,500 permanent residents. So this board has to deal with that lack of execution in the past. But when you look at Up Creek, a straight line like that on a map tells you that's an earthquake fracture line. And that is what created Sherwood Road. And there are parallel faults running all along this area. That's fine. But when you cross it at right angles, you minimize the impact. That's a viable engineering solution. Running parallel to it is a very poor solution. And I would suggest to this board that alignment I, running parallel to it and in those landslide areas, is a non-starter. It will be found to be too expensive and just plain environmentally not happening. But if you cross it right angles, you minimize that. It's easy to bridge across. And once you get on this side, this is a very gentle slope all the way down to the very end with a final connection down here that is, you know, might require a little bit of engineering, but it's nothing like the very steep areas over in this area. As for the FERCO area, if it collects 25% of the traffic at Brook Trails, I would be astonished. Whereas this, taking off at this point and ending up at the freeway would probably capture in the 75% to 80% area, based on my own experience in that area. Now, one other little tidbit here, you've got a roundabout designed in here very carefully. SB 45 requires these state and U.S. projects to accommodate local traffics. And they've done a beautiful job of creating a long frontage road and a roundabout intersection here. Roundabouts, as you know, are cheaper to build than controlled intersections. They have a better safety record and require virtually no maintenance. You have a perfect opportunity to do the same thing up here, thus duplicating driver expectation and creating free-flowing traffic here rather than a controlled intersection, which for safety would be a very important feature. Let's see, is there anything else I wanted to mention? No, I think we've covered the collectors. I would prefer this area in here. I'm impressed that the consultant, by the way, found the time between the last Brook Trails meeting to take this H and I and create this purple line. I'm very familiar with the area. I hunted there as a child, and as Howard pointed out, that's probably why I picked some of the things I did. But this point up in here, I wonder if that's really a good collection point. It's, there's something there, but so much of the traffic has to flow through either this point or this point that it seems to me that you're going to be collecting 75%, 80% by choosing this as your collecting point, rather than up in here. A person down in this area or coming from that lower quadrant that was addressed earlier in the discussion would probably not make the decision to go all the way up in here. So, those are my comments. I would recommend to this board, study IH or HI. You know, it was proposed as IH when I first saw it. And I thought it was interesting that MCAG came up with a very similar recommendation as I did and as Tony Orth did, all for different reasons. But we all came to the same conclusion, that this IH or HI would be the better of the best alternative. So I would hope that the board would go out and get high.
Thank you. Mike Chapman's.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm the general manager of Brook Trails, and I'm in my 12th year. And I would like to thank these three gentlemen for this study. A lot of things have already been said, but I'd like to just reinforce a couple of things. When you're talking about roads and water, you've basically got the chicken and egg theory. And I would make the argument that roads are extremely crucial to us at this point of our development of this community. We're basically 30% built out on our specific plan of 3,815 single-family residences. We currently have about 1,550 homes up there. And just to make a point, I also observe the traffic. I live up there, and I would suggest to you that Hal is correct on the lower one. You would definitely drag probably about 75% of the traffic. And I think the upper one, you'd probably obtain probably 2/3 of the traffic of Brook Trails where it begins for I or IH-modified. Obviously, our board, they made a motion to, at the last meeting, unfortunately, we couldn't quite get it in the packet until very late, but they would like to have this, the Board of Supervisors, at least consider the study of, obviously, the IH-modified, I-modified, and as well as the E-FERCO road, because we also realize that we have to be reasonable. It has to be practical. We understand there is a cost factor. Anybody that's ever been a manager always has to look at the bottom line as to how expensive it's going to be. And obviously, we're going to have to satisfy eventually the SEQA. But for sure, I just want to get the point across how crucial the roads are to the future development. Obviously, in the background, we have basically a $30 million dam project someday that would, I've always thought of Brook Trails as a potential escape hatch for the county in terms of housing, if you think about it. But to do so, we have to be able to move the folks around. And certainly want to thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Whitney, followed by Phil Dow.
Privileged to speak before the Board of Supervisors. And I thank the consultant for the study. I think it was an excellent study, except for the conclusions. Kind of jumped to conclusions. But I thought the actual facts that were brought forward in the study were light-years ahead of the KOA study, which was fatally flawed. So I would recommend that you accept it this time. And I think, I'd like to also thank the Department of Transportation for being so tolerant of the public process. And I think Howard said it very well, that we've come light-years since the old engineering days when it was take it or leave it. And particularly because of SEQA and public process involvement, I think you will end up with a better product, a better outcome. One of the things I wanted to point out in the letter that you received yesterday from Remy Thomas Moose and Manley is that there's criteria under SEQA that's different from engineering. It's different than the purpose and need. It's different, as you well know, of course, you're experts who go through this all the time with SEQA process. But if a project considers alternatives in the environmental review process and the EIR, and you reject those alternatives, that's your decision. But if you do it prematurely at this stage and don't study them, leave them out, like alternatives A and B, you might be, I'm not saying you would, I can't predict the future, but you might be making a critical legal error in terms of SEQA review. And the reason I say that is, it is kind of interesting that the emergency access, emergency response for, that meets the purpose and need for alternative A, is strongly supported by Little Lake Fire District Fire Chief and the head of the local Cal Fire, you know, Howard Forrest Fire Response Agency. And the reason they don't prefer that, I'm not going to put words in their mouth, but they said, at least study it. It's something that shouldn't be ignored because that's where they would, especially Little Lake Fire, and Howard Forrest, and all the conservation camp areas out on Highway 20, they would want to use Highway 20 access for their emergency response if there was a wildfire in Brook Trails. It's a common sense, right? And that meets the purpose and need. Since alternative A is one of the least expensive alternatives and the environmentally superior alternative, if you're using federal funds, you would make, I think, a critical error. not to study it. I'm not saying you'd have to choose it. Obviously, that's up to you. But you really should study it. And essentially, that's what the legal letter says. The other thing that's curious about B, if it goes, which it does, to the proposed Willetts bypass that may or may not occur, you'll know February 8th, by the way, if it goes to the Willetts bypass, alternative B, and it's the least cost and environmentally superior, why would it be excluded from the study? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Dow.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Phil Dow, Mendocino Council Governments, and no, I'm not extending Halloween. So I just really need to just be able to read a little bit. I have some concerns that I just wanted to talk about. I'm sure you've probably heard most of them, but I guess maybe I have different reasons. I have some concerns about the choices for the alternatives for the environmental phase, the Brooktrails second access. A lot of it's based, you know, the recommendation to proceed with two alternatives was based on the consultant's alignment comparisons and scoring matrix. I know you have this and have seen it. Whenever technical people, such as engineers, go through these processes, we like to do this, we say that it's not really subjective and it's objective, and it's as objective as we can get it. But Ray Hall, who served on our technical advisory committee for decades, he was kind of one of the lone planners that showed up, and he always used to remind us, you know, when you get these things, it comes up with a number, give it a reality check. And that's the kind of the way I approach this. And I see that, you know, the FERCO alternative versus the alternative I up Creek, and looking at them, you know, based on my perspective, I don't, let's talk about FERCO first. I don't believe the alternative DEF, the FERCO. I disagree with the consultant's assumption that as much as 50% of the traffic will be diverted from Sherwood Road. The alignment E intercepts Sherwood at a point too far upstream to be an effective reliever for Sherwood. And alignments DNF are also too far north, but also have an additional negative in that they may impact those two streets that tie into it. So there's an inducement of traffic on those developed neighborhoods. And I think that that is something that we ought to avoid. Although it may well serve the purpose of an evacuation route, and to a lesser extent, an emergency response route, it may be a marginal addition to the regional road system. The length and misdirection of travel will impact the public benefit of this alternative. Its use as a non-motorized route would also be minimal. So if we're looking at Complete Streets Act and looking at another end of Brooktrails, it's going to have a long way around that adds actually miles to the trip, it'd be a real negative. As far as the alternative I up Creek, it's already been criticized by some for its effectiveness as an evacuation route because of its proximity to the existing Sherwood Road corridor. Now we know that there's a property owner through which much of this route traverses that is not really willing to sell if this becomes the preferred route. Although this route may be most, you know, it may be the most effective one as far as making most sense from a traffic standpoint, implementation of this particular route may be difficult and distasteful. In summary, I agree with the process taken at this point, but I see flaws in the two build alternatives that were presented, I guess, up until today. And I don't believe that either one of those are real good matches to the purpose and need of the project. I believe it would be prudent to add a third and more direct build alternative that intersects Sherwood at a point where it can serve as an effective reliever, ties in well with the Northern 101 bypass interchange, and has sufficient separation from the Sherwood Road corridor to provide enhanced value as an evacuation route in case of natural disasters. To this point, I've spent my time pointing out the flaws of the two build alternatives. I'm also aware that today, you already have heard from others who are proponents of a modified IH or HI alignment that appears to better address the purpose and need for the second access to Brooktrails. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment at this time? No other public comment? Okay, we'll go to Supervisor Pinches.
I guess, this is not, I guess it's more like a traffic study question. The Brooktrails area, whether it's Brooktrails or Third Gate or Clearup Sherwood, the service area for all those people up there is the City of Willets, where they get gas, even the folks up there that are working in Hewlett-Packard and Santa Rosa are going south to Ukiah to work and everything. Their area, and historically, I mean, they always shop in Willets. I mean, so, you know, everybody talks about it, and because the Willetts bypass, we just heard from the project engineer this morning, it's creaking along pretty good. So hopefully, no doubt, it'll be a reality before the second access in Brooktrails.
But my question is, the only route that uses the Willetts service area would be alternative A, because people going through what they call a miracle mile on Willets, turn on Highway 20. And I don't think, whether we build three alternate routes in Brooktrails, I don't think that's going to change the way that people, I mean, Willetts is a service area for Brooktrails and Third Gate and all that up there. And I don't know, you know, whether you, if you're going to work in the morning, if you're going to Santa Rosa, you're probably going to need gas or stop and get a donut and cup of coffee. You're going to have to go into Willetts. Or if you're coming home, you need milk and bread before you go home, you got to pull into Willetts. So maybe we're overestimating the use of the, you know, they're not building the Willetts bypass for the benefit and get Brooktrails people out of there. They're building the Willetts bypass for the benefit of all of Northern California. So maybe we're kind of overlooking, you know, what are the traffic patterns going to be? Certainly, we don't want to build a road nobody's going to use. But alternative A is the only one that's going to utilize is the City of Willets being the service area for Brooktrails. And that's going to be the way it is. We never changed the zoning in Brooktrails to allow commercial development, to build a grocery store up in Brooktrails or even a gas station up in Brooktrails. The service area is still going to be the City of Willets. So would anybody like to comment on that fact? I mean, because I don't think, you know, everybody, whether you're going, I mean, think about you, when you went to work this morning, did you go directly from your home to work? Or did you stop and get a cup of coffee or a can of gas or something? Or when you go home this evening, are you going directly to your house? Or are you going to stop and get a loaf of bread or a quart of milk or coffee in the morning, something like that? Think about how your own traffic patterns are. And then, can you answer that question? No, do you think you're going to change the traffic pattern of everybody in Brooktrails and Third Gate and all the way up into saying, you know, now after this, you do your shopping in Ukiah before you go home to get on the both of the Brooktrails bypass to go up Brooktrails? I just don't.
Through the chair, if I could. Supervisor Pinches, I'll try to address that. Hearing what you're saying could certainly add an element to what we bring back to you as a study area. There are methods by which a consultant can conduct, you know, basically a random survey. They stop some cars and get a sampling of what they're doing, what those habits and patterns are. And what we really hope to do by this feasibility study is identify, you know, the board's direction for what the preferred alternative would be. Then we could certainly, you know, target those surveys and questionnaires to that. But they may lead us in another direction. Like I said, during the SEQA process, you are open to discovering new facts that you didn't know before. And we can bring that back as one of the elements of work. There are models and ways to sample for those types of things that you're describing.
Madam Chair, if I may.
And the consultant might add to that.
I do want to add one more comment. We would have to do a destination survey to see where people are going. But keep in mind, any one of these alternatives, I mean, it's not directing you, you know, thou shalt go onto Highway 101 bypass. We can still go downtown, you know, so.
Yeah, but alternative A would be the only one that'd allow them to use the Willetts as a service area and then continue on their route to go up into Brooktrails.
They could all serve that purpose.
The reason I bring this up, I've been following this a long while, and the Willetts bypass. And back when we first really got serious about the Willetts bypass, if you remember, the majority of the Willetts City Council was basically made up of retail businessmen within the City of Willetts. And at that time, they didn't even want the Willetts bypass. They wanted, they didn't want an interchange on Highway 20 because they wanted all that traffic to go, that was going to the coast, to go through what they call the miracle mile, the south end of Willetts, because their businesses wanted that. Now you have a Willetts City Council that there's really no retail business persons on the city council, and so they're, what they want to do is they say, "We want to divert all the traffic out of Willetts, much as we can." That's what they support. And you're going to get a letter from that fact. So, you know, but I'm just saying, whatever councils want, whatever we want here, I just want to know what's the reality of going to be. Because the reality of it is, there's not going to be a grocery store or a gas station built up Brooktrails in the future. The service area for that whole area, the largest community development, residential development in Mendocino County is Brooktrails, and their service area was and will be today and continue for the next 30 years, be the City of Willetts. So the last thing we want to do is build a road that not many people's going to use. And I just wonder, but I just think, think about this morning, before I come to work here, I stopped two different places to get to, you know. I mean, and you think everybody's individual, no matter where you work, whether it's Santa Rosa, Ukiah, you know, even if few people turn and go north. I mean, are they going to want to go to their town and service? They go to the bank, their bank's in Willetts. They go to the store, the store's in Willetts. Or the gas station, or, you know, the auto parts store. So I just wonder, that makes me really feel that I think we need to include alternative A into the study, because otherwise, that whole idea might get overlooked.
And through the chair, I'll just try to be brief. Again, we can initiate a study of that, but there are, you know, and that study will identify the number of people who would literally begin their trip and go directly to commute, go directly to 101. And perhaps that's an assumption that we made falsely. You know, for myself, I often begin and end, in fact, I maybe go to the store once a week, but that's just me. And, but we could identify that with a survey and confirm our assumption. It might be false. And we'll include that work in what we bring back to you.
But one thing is real clear here today, a second access to Brooktrails is not going to be all things for all people living in the Brooktrails area. It's only going to draw so much, no matter what we do. And I don't really hang my hat on any one of the routes. What I do hang my hat on though, I want to be able, hopefully in my life, to see something actually built. And so that leads to, the cost is going to be a necessary concern. So if we may be able to take, get a smaller percentage of people it serves, but actually get something done in the next 20 years, to me, that's really important. Than to say, oh, we're going to wait and design and build, it's going to get 10% more of the traffic volume, but it'll never get done. Then the study money and everything's kind of out the window, and that's the last thing I want to see. But it's just not, this is not going to be all things for all people.
Okay. Any other board questions? Comments? Supervisor Amber.
Yeah, I just want to agree with John because of all the other benefits to alternative A. I mean, the emergency services part seems to be really important to me with the Howard, you know, it seems like the Howard Station, you know, thinks that's a good alternative. It's cheaper, it's environmentally the simplest. And I also, you know, I really agree with John's argument about Willetts being the service center for these folks. And why are they going to want to come out north of the existing Sherwood Road intersection just to go back down south into Willetts? Seems to me that most people, like if they're going south, they want to go south. They don't want to go north to go south. So, you know, I guess I just, you know, I don't know what the other alternative should be, but it seems to me that the A alternative should not be taken out of the mix at this point.
If I may, Madam Chair, real quickly. Another point, this, and it was brought up with the Willetts bypass, we're going to get a new hospital in Willetts, but it's going to be on the south end. Alternate A will still be the closest emergency, not only for fire trucks, but also getting to the hospital. Otherwise, if you use another route, you're going to have to go clear, get out on the freeway, go north on the new freeway, go south on the freeway, and then turn and get off of that, come back and still go down through the south end of Willetts to get back to the new hospital, which is going to be behind Brown's Corner. So the emergency access to a hospital, you know, fire's one thing, getting out of a house, but when you need to get to the hospital, five, 10 minutes makes a big difference. So that's just, and I'm sure this will show up in the study, but that's the main reason I'm arguing, that we need this, to not eliminate A at this point. Because I think there's a lot of things that will come out if we include that in the study.
I have a question on your, did you want to comment on that?
Well, I believe the consultant might have. I think what we've got here is a situation where the board may be clarifying their perception of what the purpose and need is. So I'll let the consultant go ahead and state why A was looked at as not really meeting the purpose and need of the project. And then I will confirm that the board is maybe taking us a different direction. So why don't you do that, Craig?
Well, when we looked at alternative A, and those are valid points about servicing the community, but remember, when we go back, whoops, when we go back to the, when you look at the traffic analysis part of this, everybody has to travel through, you know, if you want to get to alternative A, you've got to come off of Sherwood and come through this point right here, and make your way through these local neighborhoods. And we are a little bit skeptical that people that are already committed to Sherwood Road, because Sherwood Road's always going to be there, all the people up here are going to go onto Sherwood Road, these people can make that decision. But most people that are on Sherwood Road and are heading for Willetts, I would, our assumption was, was that they would stay committed to Sherwood. And so that kind of drove this down as far as the attractiveness for that being a travel route. And then the other thing about evacuation, or another route out for fire, or away in for fire, the Brooktrails Community Service District has already identified two routes that come off of Highway 20, and another one that indirectly comes off of there for emergency access personnel to access the area for fire. And so that one, and then the other thing that we found, and I, you know, we've done some studies in other areas, if you look at the, for instance, the Oakland Fire Report that talks about why all the fatalities occurred and where they occurred, they occurred in the local residential maze of roads. People just abandoned their cars and blocked those small roads, and people couldn't get out behind them. And that's where all the problems occurred. It didn't occur on the collector roads coming in and out. So you need to be able to get to your collector road before you can get out.
My recollection on the A discussion was, is it didn't, it didn't really deal effectively with the traffic flow, which is, I think, one of our two considerations for the citing or the planning for the second access route. And, you know, there's been some discussion today and some disagreement, of course, about which of these various upper levels are really the most efficient, the most practical. But that was my recollection, is that A really, really didn't address sort of this congestion issue. I mean, we had an issue this morning that actually touched on this with the need for emergency repairs to Sherwood Road that was handled recently by the City of Willetts, and then the relationship of that to the county. And it seems like that is a critical piece of what needs to happen. I mean, wouldn't we all like to go back decades ago and have the developer pay for the kinds of things we're talking about now? This density that was created that should never have been allowed without the proper infrastructure. But I, I mean, that's my recollection. There's not a lot in the packet today, because we weren't really talking about A. There's not a lot in the packet today because we weren't really talking about A. But my recollection is, is that A had been eliminated because it really didn't deal with that critical piece. Then I want to get on and ask a question relative to Mr. Dow's comments.
Well, sure, let me just real briefly get to that. The staff has, and the, I think the project development team have, and really the planning documents that were cited, have seen the Willits bypass as a new, good transportation facility, 101 realigned for handling traffic that the Brooktrails Second Access should tie into and take advantage of that link as an opportunity, you know, for a good, efficient traffic flow. What I'm hearing today though, and I'm willing to take this from the board, and maybe I've got it wrong, but I think when I come back in a month with your contract alternatives for the ongoing work, is what I'm starting to hear is maybe a purpose and need, which is to link Brooktrails to the community of Willits. And then from there, allow, you know, the tie-ins with the transportation facility. So you can see where I'm starting to see in my mind, two different purposes being expressed. And I, just so the board knows I'm seeing that, I'd like your clear direction on that. Maybe not now, but in a month, for sure.
Well.
Well, I'd like to continue on with my second question, Mr. DeShield, for whomever. But I'd like to go back to a statement that I had not seen until today because Mr. Dow just delivered this. But I am, I would like comment on this. He's talking, because he hasn't seen here what he thinks from a transportation perspective it would be the best to be looking at, the most ideal. And he says, what he thinks would be better would be to add a third, more direct build alternative that intercept, and I'd like, if you could go back to that previous map and maybe show us on the map what he's talking about. "A third, more direct build alternative that intersects Sherwood at a point where it can serve as an effective reliever, ties in well with the northern 101 bypass interchange, and has sufficient separation from the Sherwood Road corridor to provide enhanced value as an evacuation route in case of natural disasters." So that's clearly a tall order to do those things, but we are, those are all valid realms that we've been talking about. So, he's saying he's not seeing it there. Could you shed any light on what he might be thinking, or maybe Mr. Dow would like to himself?
Mr. Dow is going to have to do that.
I thought you could just take your pointer and.
Phil Dow, Amcock, I'm not saying I don't see it there. I'm, I'm responding to information that I had before this morning, before the IHHI, whatever you're going to call it. What I'm, what I'm saying is, if you look at where the old I was, I remember hearing some criticism about that as an evacuation route in case of natural catastrophes because of its proximity to the Sherwood Road corridor. Anything you push off to the north of there, which are the IHHI, whatever, provides more separation than what you normally would have had in the I. So, anything further to the north of there, I think there's less of an argument about, well, it's almost the same place you're coming out. There's a big fire, it'll get you all. And so I'm thinking the more separation, the less of an argument you would have from that aspect.
So you're saying, Mr. Dow, that the pink and the blue lines do reflect, and I can't read it from here. It's, the blue one looks like H, and, oh, an IH.
Yeah, both IH.
Oh, the two versions of IH.
I think it has more separation, so there's less of an argument about they're too close.
So you're saying.
I mean, that isn't a great amount, but it's, it will be less of an argument about having two parallel routes.
So you don't say that you have another thought in mind? You're saying that you do think that these two, or either of these would, would address what you, what I just read?
Yes, I do. I, I think what, what has been presented here is much more in tune with what I had in mind.
Okay, well, that helps.
Could I ask Phil a question?
Sure.
Phil, do you have the same problem with alignment A? That, you know, you just don't think people will, will utilize it because it's too far from Sherwood Road and there's too much congestion to go through to get to it?
Yeah, I do. I, you know, we, we went through this A alignment over the last 20 years. And, and before I came here, yesterday, I broke out our old Brooktrails study. And guess when the date was? November 2, 1991, so it was 20 years ago. And looked at, kind of reviewed that. You know, Alternative A, the catchment area of how many people are going to be using that and how much of a relief that it would have to actual Sherwood, it would be marginal, I think. And then you're creating a whole new intersection on Highway 20, which is a problem in itself. And then before you even get to that Miracle Mile, you're shoving all that traffic down into that bottleneck at Highway 20 and existing Main Street 101, and down between there and the railroad tracks. So it, it's not exactly just siphoning it down and putting it down on, on Highway 101. So, and regarding people's trips, I know that we, we still are referring to somewhat of a, an origin and destination study that was done some time ago, at least 15 years ago or 20 years ago, about the desired travel lines. And at that time, we figured that maybe 40% of the trips wanted to go south to Ukiah or south. And so it would make sense to get them on the more, most direct route, recognizing that if people still have things or places they want to stop and shop in Willits, they can still go down Sherwood Road and go through the south part of town. I don't know that most people are, have the same habits that I do either, but seems to me in my life, most of the flexibility is in the evening. Certainly not in the morning when you're trying to get somewhere. And I think most people want it the most direct route. And if they're going to stop somewhere, they'd likely stop on the way back, which, which they can come up through the south part of town and then continue on, on north on Main Street and going up Sherwood Road if they'd like. So, you know, these are the, the kind of interesting things you, you encounter because traffic engineering always has to take into account the human factor and what are people going to do with it. And I, but I, I don't concur with that Alternative A is the way to go at this point. I think we've always kind of planned on that being the third access. And as there's more build out in Brooktrails, south and east and west of Sherwood Road, that would be the logical third connector.
I think Supervisor McCollum was next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, the purpose today, I thought, was to, you know, refine the options and narrow them. And it seems like we're expanding them. And we've already identified there's probably not enough money to go around to do all the planning that we need to do to get in a position to go out and compete for funds if they ever become available. So, I'm not sure we're moving forward here. But with regard to A, I don't think that does meet the purpose and need. And in terms of the emergency ingress and egress, that is already available with Alternative A, is it not?
There is, as the report shows, the emergency routes that private landowners have made available for emergency vehicles in emergencies. One of those routes is, in fact, pretty much alignment A.
Right, so it's, so it's already available for emergency access. Because I agree, that neighborhood is really at risk if, if there were to be a fire. I think that's, well, there's a lot of areas and Brooktrail would be a disaster. But that's one where very predictably, if people didn't have alternative ways to get out, you could have an Oakland Hills situation. And so, does A help enough? I don't know, but it helps and it's available. So that's the point. We don't need to have it be the, the alternative that eventually gets built in order to have the emergency ingress and egress. I do like the idea, though, of having a low-cost alternative. And I guess with B, the, you know, the arguments against B, because it certainly picks up a huge amount of the Brooktrails traffic because it is so much further down. But also for that same reason, it even creates more of a possibility that the new alignment would be taken out by the same disaster that may take out Sherwood. So, other than that, just briefly, once again, the pluses and minuses for B.
I'll defer to Craig Drake for, if he could, the supervisor's asking, in your report, in the matrix, what were the advantages for B?
Well, B does an excellent job of pulling traffic off of Sherwood because most of the traffic is on Sherwood and it's a, it's almost a parallel route. But that's also kind of a knock against it, is that it's almost exactly Sherwood. It's, it doesn't really serve much in the way of evacuation route and it really fails as far as an emergency, or emergency response. Because if Sherwood is blocked up above where it ties in, where alignment B ties in, it doesn't matter whether you have alignment B or not, you're not going to get up there. So that's really the biggest downfall of alignment B.
One more, if I may. The comments to I paralleling the Up Creek Valley and that it's better to have the alternative that crosses it. If we were to choose between one or the other and have either I or, or modified IH, what would your recommendation be? And do you think that argument had merit?
I, I think it's, it has merit. We hadn't looked at Alternative HI until just recently. We think it shows a lot of promise in the fact that it is on the other side of the Up Creek Valley. It does get it away from the earthquake faulting. It does offer the meadows as a fire break, if you will. And it, it gets it up out of the, out of the sensitive environmental areas that are adjacent to the creek itself. So I think it would be environmentally superior to, to going down Up Creek. Now, obviously, Up Creek, from an engineering standpoint, you know, Up Creek is great. It's a straight shot and it's along a creek. And that's why roads end up along creeks and rivers, because the river already did all the work of excavating for you. But, but I think it's a good alternative to I. I don't know if I would go with both I and HI.
If, if you only went with one.
I'd go with HI.
Supervisor Pinches?
I, Alternative B, actually, that will dislocate some existing homes too, right?
It gets very, very close to existing properties. It does go through some existing built-up properties.
Which is different from any other of the alternates. The only one that, you know, and then you get into an issue there. It's, and when you get into eminent domain, you have to basically prove in eminent domain that there's no other good alternate route. And that'd be pretty hard to prove when you're showing seven or eight different routes. So, I don't think I really want to do that.
So maybe, Mr. DeShield or to our consultants, could we go over the recommended action motion? There are four different components to it. But since this was published, I believe we had this new addition that we've just been talking about, the INH Modified, the suggestion, I believe, of adding that. Could you just walk us through?
Sure, the recommended action was, number one, by resolution, all three of these, to accept the supplemental feasibility study, the Brooktrails Second Access Project, prepared by Drake Hagel and Associates. I might add, two, accept that, but if there are facts or information that can be included, the final draft of it will be updated with all that we've received. I just think it's good to have that information all in the record. So, really, your action today would be to accept it and bear in mind that these good ideas that have come from Brooktrails and members of the public would get incorporated. Number two, which is, we've been discussing, approve the designated alternate I route and the Furco Hall Road route and the no-bill alternative for further development and study. Well, you could easily, just as easily say, alternate HI and you wanted to add another alternate for us to study. But the real future decision point comes in number three. You're going to authorize and direct county staff to effect discussions and negotiations with Drake Hagel and Associates and determine the fair, reasonable cost and timeframe to complete Phase Two of the agreement they're under, which is, and then direct the county staff, number four, to bring back to the board, as soon as practicable, the relevant amendment to that agreement. And at that point, we would show you again what work we've laid out. So we're really looking for some direction today. We would have liked to have brought back that amendment to the contract with specific work and the amount, the cost. That's when we'll know what the, what the gap is in funding. And it'll give you a chance to even think a little bit more about it. I would say at that point, you know, we will have further discussion. But we, we, you know, at this point, if we amended number two of this recommended motion, and if in fact, there's less and less desire for, say, the Furco Hall Road route and more desire for Alternative A, you could take one out and put one in. Or you could just add some, but that would be helpful for us. And we would bring them back to you in such a way that we could have a discussion of the cost in the contract when we come back in a month or so or whenever we're able to do that. So right now, you could take the motion in. I would recommend that you adjust number two for us, if you can, and if you.
And you would recommend that HI be added, or are you?
I, I think that substituting HI for I sounds like what staff has, over the last just four days, decide would make sense for us, since we wrote this agenda summary.
Okay, well, that's getting closer.
Yeah.
I mean, the narrowing ideas.
So we, I would offer that, where it says alternate I to be alternate HI or IH.
Okay.
Whichever one.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair Smith. I'm looking at the district supervisor.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we, I called on you to.
Thank you.
Call, to comment. Supervisor Pinches?
Madam Chair, I'm going to start with a motion here to approve the recommended motion, with the exception of number two, to prove further development study and study under Phase Two. No, approve designation of alternate routes HI, A, and Furco Hall Road, plus the no-bill alternative for further development study under Phase Two.
I'll second.
So we have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Pinches, and we have a second by Supervisor Hamburg. Supervisor McCollum?
Well, based on the full discussion, I can't support the inclusion of option A. I don't think it fulfills the purpose and need, so why study it?
Well, there's another reason that we haven't, and that's this letter from this attorney firm, basically putting us on notice that if you don't study, you're going to get sued. And I don't think the study of it is going to add to that. Howard already stated that we probably don't have enough money to fulfill Phase Two anyway. And we don't want to get this process along and have to go back because we get sued. So I, I think now is the time to answer those questions that I brought up and others have brought up and get it out of the way. Maybe a simple traffic study analysis of who would use that route. But, but I think it has to be included, just, just for the liability issue of, because we've already been put on notice at two different letters, one before and now, that we better study option A or Alternative A.
I believe they already have the study.
And that, we're still limited to only three routes we're studying. We're paring it down pretty quick here. I remember it was a dozen years before they even started pairing down routes in the Willits bypass.
Supervisor, I know the clerk has it. Could you just repeat again, the three that you, you mentioned?
HI, A, and the Furco Hall Road. Plus, plus you got to include the no-bill option too. So there's actually four, four options.
Okay, more discussion? Do we have any other discussion to the motion? So we'll go to Mr. DeShield.
Yeah, if you, you don't mind, the Supervisor Pinches brought up the letter by Remy Thomas Musson Manley. I'm not an attorney, I don't pretend to be one, but I find it interesting that if I were a resident up on Primrose Drive near the Alternative A takeoff, I could plagiarize this letter, recopy it word for word, and replace AB with CG and say that CG needs to be studied too, or negate studying A. I, again, not an attorney, but I just couldn't help but make that observation. All of a sudden, now we've turned attention to A, someone there could say, "Well, therefore, CG." And we're not talking about that. But I just had to make that point. Counsel can weigh in if they, she is an attorney.
We're going to go to Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Smith. And I do agree with you, Supervisor Pinches, and Remy Thomas Musson Manley.
Oops, okay. The legal firm of Remy Thomas Musson Manley is.
The legal firm of Remy Thomas Moose and Manley is one of the top environmental law firms in the state, and I have to agree with Supervisor Pinches that we can have some problems that would cost us more money as we move into the future.
Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, we already spent more time looking at A and FERCO because we were threatened that we had to look at them, so we've looked at them. And I would ask county counsel, if we may, it appears to me there's an abundance of evidence in the record now that says alternate A does not fulfill the purpose and need. And that doesn't mean we couldn't get sued, but if we're going to do or not do something every time someone says they're going to sue us, we're not going to be able to do much.
Well, I agree with that, but if you have an alternative that's environmentally superior, it's feasible, it's reasonable, it meets the needs of the projects...
But it doesn't meet the need.
Well, and you don't study it, there's a problem. You may have a problem with SEQA. I think an important question can be asked, and maybe this is the way you can resolve this issue, is what does it cost to add alternative A to the study?
Well, we'll bring that back, as I said, with the contract, but I add, again, alternate A really provides a better connection to Highway 20 and to going through Willets. So if the board wants to direct us and say, we really think that's the better purpose for this project, all of a sudden, A becomes a wonderful option. But I believe Supervisor McCowen's correct. It really doesn't meet the purpose and need that we set out, you know, to solve, to begin with. So, but we're open to new direction.
So when he brings back the cost, if the cost to add alternative A to the study makes the whole project impractical, then alternative A could drop off, and I think you'd be fine. But right now, you know, the report does put it in a category of feasible, reasonable, and environmentally superior.
And not meeting the purpose and need.
That's something you can look at.
But counsel, that doesn't seem to me to be a prudent approach, is using the cost factor, it's the other issues. And I thought I heard the consultant state here today that there were some environmental concerns with A. Maybe I have that wrong, but didn't you state there were some environmental concerns that you had with A?
No.
No?
There's a little bit to the fisheries, but that's not huge.
C and G are just as, those three words counsel just used, as alternatives. Like I said, I could retype this letter and substitute A and B for C and G if I lived on Primrose Drive. And I could be an attorney, no.
But you stated that, Mr. DeShield, that you were going to bring us back. Are we talking about the option number four? That you would be bringing it back to us with more of the cost delineations? I mean, I agree, we've got to really narrow this down to what's the reasonable and prudent and practical, and the sooner we get to that, then we're not, it's not, we're not spending extraneous, we're not having extraneous information floating around.
Well, we want, the most important thing, I think, is to build a good project that serves the people of Brook Trails and accomplishes, you know, like someone said, gets the bang for the bump. I'm pragmatic enough to agree with that. But if we've got a fundamental disconnect on what we're really trying to accomplish, like a connection to Willets or connection to 101, I want to clear that up with this board. So when I come back, hopefully, you'll have thought about that and can really give me direction. And then we will break down the cost, because you're going to approve a contract amendment, you know, we'll break down costs, and we probably will have to look at phasing even at that point, because there will be a gap in funding. And then it'll explore what the additional funding will need to be to complete the different options. So, we're not, I don't think it would make sense to make a decision just on the cost of the design and environmental work up front. Make the decision based on what you really feel is needed out there. And again, we're staff, you know, you're the elected officials, you represent the people who vote for you, and, you know, the wisdom out there of the community. And if a connection to Willets that's more efficient is really the direction we want to go, let's go that direction. And then I think we'd agree that A becomes a wonderful alternative at that point.
Well, I'd say, Mr. DeShield, that's a little bit too much, throwing it back on the decision makers. If we were on a path to deal with traffic congestion issues, evacuation issues, we have a new Willets bypass going in that hopefully we, as we heard earlier today, will be knowing pretty definitively on a February vote, I don't, I don't think it just should be that sort of by three votes, we shift the entire direction of a project to something entirely different. I'd say, wait a minute, we need to step back and have a major discussion if that's what's happening. So I don't kind of take it quite that lightly. I...
Well, I didn't mean to make it light, Madam Chair, but the point is, is that let's have that major discussion and make that decision, then. That really is a policy decision at that point.
But then I think you're going to need to bring us more definitive information and more detailed information than what's outlined in this recommended action motion for today, if we're going to be shifting gears. But if you're saying at this juncture that you don't think there's much additional cost to study the three options, A, and then the modified HI, and the FERCO, and the no-bill, so you're really studying three specific action items, and if you're saying today that you feel comfortable with that for this next step, then I think that that's fine. But I don't want to just think we're going to redefine the entire project when we next revisit this.
No, when we come back, and I bring back the price tag for those three alternates, it'll be pretty major sticker shock, I think.
Okay.
But what I'd like to get to at that point is, and not to just throw it back on you, that isn't correct. You know, staff has been, staff has been pursuing this project under the assumption that the goal, what we were trying to achieve, was a good, efficient connection to the 101 bypass of Willets that would, you know, move traffic out of Brook Trails right into the new freeway system quickly and efficiently, because we saw that as the purpose and need. That's, and, of course, emergency, a second emergency ingress and egress. If we're wrong in that, and these new ideas have come up, let's have that discussion. And I didn't mean to just throw it back and make a major change, but let me just say, now's the time to make that major change, because I'm hearing mixed signals. See why I'm trying to say?
Well, we're not going to be doing that today, then.
No, we're not going to do it today, but when we come back, I think we need to be prepared to have that discussion.
Okay. Supervisor Pinches?
Yeah, I don't, I think it's a little bit too early on. You know, we got a letter from both fire agencies, Cal Fire and the local, about, you know, saying, hey, look at alternative A. So I think it's a little early in the process, just to boo-hoo those letters. I mean, they are emergency responders, and if they send me a letter that says, hey, look at this route, you should look to study it, I'm not going to discount that. I'm going to do everything I can to make sure, and that's only the one reason, the liability issue is another. But I think there's about three good reasons to study alternate A.
Right. And it does meet the emergency access thing. I guess our thing is, is we have a step cycle and funding that has an expiration date. I'll look at Bob, but we're supposed to be done by July of 13?
It's, excuse me, Bob Parker, it's actually two fiscal years after the allocation fiscal year, so it's kind of a complex thing. It's basically three years.
So, okay, but we have till 2013 to get the work done?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, one of the thoughts I had is, we could come back with an option when we bring the contract amendment, and we could simply do a destination study as an intermittent step, and that might help the board have the information the chair spoke about. Well, do we really know where the people need to go, if they need to go through Willets anyway, and that's their intended route, then that would make a difference. But I've got to be, I've got to be cognizant of the fact that if we take too long, you know, we will simply run out of time to get the work done. We've already taken a good amount of time to supplement the feasibility study. So that's why I'm saying that, you know, we'll try to come back with some options for you when we come back, but we are trying to get direction as well. And we do look to you for that direction.
Okay, Mr. Parker wants to say something.
Yeah, Bob Parker. Just to help focus on narrowing down the possibilities, we could, I think everybody would agree that we go with alternative E for the FERCO, and the other connections would be a future consideration.
Supervisor Brown?
I'd like to call for the question.
All right. Question has been called. Clerk is clear on the motion and the three items that were delineated by the maker of the motion for item number two?
Actually, it's four items when you include the no-bill option. You have, under SEQA, you have to keep that included.
Right. Okay, yes, the three and the no-bill, totaling four. So we're clear on everything?
HI, A, and FERCO.
Okay.
And then no-bill.
All right. So let's vote by the button.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Clarification to the motion. I believe Mr. Parker just asked for us to be specific, when we say FERCO Hall Road, do we mean alignment E or ED and F? And I believe he's recommending that we look at E for now, with the others being potential future connections.
Does that go with the maker of the motion?
Yeah, sure.
And the second?
Yes.
Okay. So we're clear on that? All right. Okay, please vote.
What do you know?
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. So we're going to take a recess until 3:30, and then we have just a few remaining items for the day. So you changed your mind? What happened? For a brief recess, at 3:39, we have a number of items of general business to discuss, and we will go to agenda item number four, that's the approval in minutes, and those will be continued to the next meeting. Then, appointments to boards and commissions? Supervisor McCowen?
I'll move this slate.
Second.
Supervisor McCowen's motion, Supervisor Pinches' is a second. Any discussion on the list? Seeing none, all was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, turned none, passes unanimously. Let's go to the CEO's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The supervisors should have my CEO report in hard copy in front of you. There should be some in the back, and it is on our website. To start off with, we always talk a little bit about our budget. I'm not certain that this board is aware that we did receive our long-term credit rating from Standard and Poor. And again, this is the result of our continued efforts to refund our certificates of participation. And we received a rating of BBB minus with outlook stable, which is the same rating that we had prior to this analysis. While this outcome wasn't entirely surprising, we had really hoped that we would improve our long-term credit rating. And unfortunately, that didn't happen. Two areas that were problems for us with Standard and Poor, one was teeter, and the second was the SEIU wage concessions. The teeter debt, it's clear with Standard and Poor that it's likely to be viewed as a general fund debt, that they don't, they don't see that changing. And so what that means is that we will have teeter as a negative general fund deficit until it's paid off. The auditor is trying to expedite that amortization schedule, so hopefully, we're looking at 2017 or 2018 to pay off teeter.
Question is, Angelo, on this, from Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are they willing to recognize the teeter receivable as an offset to the debt?
Yes.
Thank you.
They are, yeah.
And really, what has changed on that, Ms. Angelo? Because isn't, I, that's really just sort of the way it's been, isn't it? Or is it, is it just because we are shining more of a spotlight on that, and we have this debt very clearly delineated, that they're drawing more attention to it, or what?
Well, the, the, the teeter debt was never highlighted because it always had the receivables going against it. And then, in fiscal year 910, that changed with our external audit. And then, when that changed, and it was then reported as a general fund deficit, and there was, there was no credit giving essentially to the general fund, and it just appeared as a $16 million general fund deficit. When, at that point in time, because of that change, that's when it really has impacted and will continue to impact our credit ratings. Now, even though our outside auditor that will do our, that is doing our audit this year has agreed that they will go back to the original methodology as far as reporting teeter, it still, unfortunately, doesn't make a difference with Standard and Poor. So I don't know how to describe it other than it's, it's one of those reporting things that happened, and we can't seem to get past it, when it really comes to improving our credit rating. However, it's not only teeter. I think if it was just teeter and the issue around reporting teeter, it might be different. But because our revenue streams have not grown, and in fact, have been diminished, and because our expenditures, while they've come down, they're still a little higher than what we bring in, that's still coming into play. But S&amp;P did say that, given another year or so of seeing some substantial changes, as they've seen over the past couple of years with the efforts of this board, that they do think that our credit rating could improve, long-term and short-term.
So if they see the continued payment structure that we're currently under, and we continue in the, in the direction we're in, that is going to possibly change how that would be looked at in the future?
That's right. I mean, we have, since this board authorized the amortization schedule, we have been making all of our debt service payments. The problem, though, is, again, that the revenue just hasn't met the expenditures, and so that's in all of our reports as well. So as we continue to reduce our expenditures and get more credit for that in our annual audit, then that will make a difference with our credit rating.
Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, just for the record, teeter did not, had not previously been an issue, not because the teeter receivable was being credited against teeter. That wasn't happening, and that's how the teeter debt grew. The receivable was, as it was received, was simply dumped into the general fund and expended for general fund purposes. Teeter was flying below the radar. I can't identify exactly why that was. Part of it was that the financially, the people who were supposed to be responsible for protecting the financial condition of the county were not doing their job, whether they were unaware or they were looking away. They absolutely weren't doing their job in tracking teeter and making sure that the receivable was being used to offset the debt. And what's really curious to me is how the auditor, and we've had the same auditor through the entire period of time, never saw that as an issue until 2009, when this board put teeter on an amortization to make sure that we absolutely paid it down. Then suddenly, it gets highlighted as an issue, and the auditor has blamed county staff and said, oh, that's the way they were reporting it. Well, where was the auditor for the previous 15 years? But, but it's just really ironic that once we very clearly take action to pay that debt down, to control it, to prevent it from increasing, and pay it off, that's when we get dinged for it. So, welcome to the world of high finance.
Supervisor Pinches?
Well, I think, you know, if you read the report, basically, you know, we're doing really well on the expenditure side of cutting expenditures, but the real problem here that the state report shows is, you know, as our revenues are flat and decreasing, and not only that, our state revenues, even federal, the future of them are looking on the downside, too. So that's why you're not, I don't see any county at our size getting a uptick in their credit rating because of the uncertainties of the economic conditions and the state, you know, and federal monies coming in there. If you look at the outlook projection for them next two or three years, it's very bleak. So I don't think anybody's going to get a credit upgrade with those revenue projections looking what they're going to be out there. I just don't think it's going to, it'd probably be, I mean, they would be remiss as a credit, the rating agency, if they did, because the future projections on the revenue side are very bleak.
Actually, Supervisor McCowen, to your comments about the auditor, with the previous auditor, we had discussions about teeter, and there was direction given to the previous auditor, and I really don't know what happened, because it was discussed before 2009, and we had to first kind of extract it out of the miscellaneous budget. That was one kind of hurdle. And then I believe with changes in the executive office from year to year, that whatever attention it may have got at the budgetary process wasn't continued, there wasn't any continuity through quarterly reviews like we have now, getting that... There wasn't any continuity through quarterly reviews like we have now, getting that budget into one budget unit and sticking to, I believe, direction that this body gave on a number of occasions. So I think it continued to slip through the cracks until, I think, 2009, but it wasn't without discussion or, and it really did involve, I think at this point it's involved two auditors and I do believe that changes at the executive level didn't allow things that did come to the service to be rectified and then a game plan stuck to.
Well, now you're talking about the county auditor, but...
You were talking about the external.
I was talking about the outside auditor, but I think it was kind of a team play. And the fact is that either people didn't understood, didn't understand, or they ignored that they had to pay the current year delinquency in full every year or the debt would escalate. So in '07 and '08, I think the debt shot up another $2 million each year because someone failed to understand that the full amount of the current year delinquency had to be paid plus an additional amount or your debt was just going to keep ratcheting up.
Yeah.
If I may, and what happened was, because every year at budget time, and I was including a lot of them, and before me, the auditor would come and say the final closeout numbers is, oh, you got $2 million you can actually spend. So during the final budget deliberations, the board allocated so much money here. If that money was put to balance out the teeter, that wouldn't have been there, but it made the board, or give the option to the board with not knowing the full ramifications of that, a million, $2 million a year to allocate out to do different things and that we normally wouldn't have said we wouldn't have the money to do, but...
So again, the people that should have been safeguarding the financial response, the financial health of the county either didn't know or even worse, knew and were misrepresenting.
But the result was the same, right? We were spending money we didn't have.
Right.
Okay, Ms. Angelo.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving along in my report, I have been in communication with our retirement administrator, Jim Anderson, yes?
If I may, before you go on, because you just briefly mentioned the wage concession issue and I think that's worth highlighting, that that's part of what we have to be focused on and that's part of what the auditor or the credit rating agency is concerned about.
Okay, thank you Supervisor McCown, yes. We talked about teeter. The second area that stood out is our wage concessions. And when we began working with Standard and Poor, we were in the process, this was a few months ago, thinking that we were going to achieve those wage concessions soon. So in this last go-around with them, it stood out that the one and a half million that we thought we were going to get in wage concessions hadn't come through yet. So that was also another factor in our credit rating. So, you know, those were the two factors that really drove S&amp;P to keep us at the BBB minus rating, along with the fact that, you know, we don't have a robust local economic base here and so... But those two areas were key in us keeping the same rating. Okay, I want to talk a little bit about retirement and I spoke with the retirement administrator. The retirement board met on October 9th. I won't go into that, there may be a report later today, but I just wanted to say that regarding the meeting that we're going to have with the Board of Supervisors and the Retirement Board, some of the areas that we think would be good to discuss will be... One would be the experience study and then the other one would be the underpayment, overpayment. So there is a project that's moving forward now on correcting the errors regarding the employee and employer contribution rates that were calculated by Buck. And so the retirement administrator should know by December, sometime around when we have our joint meeting, as to what that underpayment, overpayment will look like. And then they'll know the entire, we should all know the entire amount by January. So I think this is significant and I also think that the joint meeting that we'll have is really timely and I think could be very good overall, so.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you. Chair Smith, I just have two points you had put in your report. We may want to use part of that time at our joint meeting to discuss...
Right.
...that particular issue and it's not may, I think we have to.
Okay.
And then the second question is, do we not have appointments to the retirement board coming up? And if so, I believe it's December, but I'm not positive, and I would like to know that perhaps by our next meeting.
Okay.
And what seats are up.
Okay. All right, we could have that information for you.
Yeah, I think there are two and we should be able to have that by the next meeting.
Okay, and also though, in regards to the point about the agenda for the combined meeting, Chair Smith and myself and Mr. Anderson and the Chair of the Retirement Board will be meeting, I believe that meeting might be this week. I don't have my calendar in front of me. And we will be planning for this meeting. So what I have here will be topics that we'll talk about.
Also, Ms. Angelo, at the last, at our last meeting, I reported from the Retirement Board and brought the document, that is the comprehensive prevailing document about the issue Supervisor Brown raised on the joint, on the repayment issue, the overpayment, underpayment concerns and the document about how that's going to be conducted. It's a very technical document, but I have copies of that, as I had said at the last meeting, to share if anyone wants to see that technical document. But I agree, I think that we have to have it on the agenda as a discussion.
Absolutely.
So we have more understanding going forward.
Just exactly.
Yeah. And with the underpayment, overpayment, not only what that amount will be, but when we have to pay it back. Is that something we have to pay back this year or can that wait till next fiscal year? And then also, I'm very curious to see what the rates are going to be for fiscal year 12-13. While we know we don't have those rates, I don't think the Retirement Board will have those rates until January, but that's something I'm anxious to hear more about as well.
And I believe that the goal is to get the corrective action established in this calendar year so it can be implemented, I believe, January 1st or first pay period in January. So any corrections will take effect at the beginning of a calendar year. So there'll be a clear cutoff point of when an erroneous factor was used to create the employee's share, that'll be corrected going forward. So there'll be a clear line in the sand, a clear time point to know when, because to correct what, and the dollars amounts are not supposed to be very significant, but it's going to be important to get that resolved so at its point in time going forward that it's a correct factor. It's a very detailed factor for employee, employer contribution and so the goal would be to have that in place at the beginning of the new year. Supervisor Brown.
Thank you. I just don't want surprises or last-minute decisions, you know, time for thought and discussion. And I just think it's important that we get there.
I agree, yeah.
So I'll go to the clerk. The clerk has a question?
And I just wanted to confirm that that would be a board directive, having that information.
And what would be on, that we will have the, part of the time of the joint meeting will be to discuss the employees' overpayment slash underpayment contributions to the retirement fund?
Yes, I believe that was a request that Supervisor Brown made.
Yes, and so I believe, I don't see there's any objection to that, so that'll be clearly on the agenda. Supervisor McCown.
Well, I don't think everything we say has to become a board directive. I think it's sufficient that you and the CEO and the Retirement Administrator are going to meet and set the agenda, you know?
Yeah, but I think, I just think that the clerk, because we had a discussion, he's trying to...
Well, they track directives, so...
Exactly, I think he was trying to track that.
I don't know that that's one that they need to track.
Well, he was asking for clarification, I was just trying to assist.
That'd be my clarification. I think you folks will set the agenda.
And we will do that. We will, we'll have an agenda setting.
They're going to meet again.
Ms. Angelo?
Thank you very much. Okay, page two. On October 25th, the board made appointments with the Business Improvement District Advisory Board and we will be working on scheduling a meeting soon and they'll be working on the bid annual report. And then, of course, our redevelopment agency five-year implementation plan, the board will hear a mid-year report on November 8th. I wanted to also update this board on all of our moves. We've had general services in here a couple times. Kristin McMenamy has reported to this board on the status of the moves. Rather than having another agenda item, I just went ahead and put this on my CEO report. You can see there's multiple moves still continuing and I could certainly run through them or just answer any questions. I think the one that I will highlight, though, is the social services Aphenito facility move into the Avala Center. There have been numerous steps involved in this move from the Aphenito building, which has housed our staff and our services for 10 years, now to the Avala Center. GSA staff will issue a bid on November 1st today for the remodel of the Avala Center as it was permitted by the City of Fort Bragg. The bid will be out for 30 days and then the final recommendation will come to this board for approval on December 13th. Staff will coordinate the move out of the Aphenito building to the Avala Center in January of 2012 rather than November this month as originally planned. However, all other moves are on schedule and to be completed by the spring of 2012. I think that this move in particular has been a big move, continues to be a big move and there were multiple steps in there, including working with the staff, working with the state, not only with the facility remodel, but also with some information technology and some security upgrades that needed to happen and that still need to happen. So we are firm that we will be out of the Aphenito building in January and in the Avala Center.
Supervisor McCown.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, with the bids coming to the board on December 13th and then we're going to approve them, or presumably we'll approve something, it's hard to see that the construction would actually be completed by January. So you're saying the January deadline is firm, so what is your plan for ensuring that that happens, given that construction is likely to still be underway?
There is remodeling that absolutely has to happen and then there's remodeling that should happen and that's nice to have remodeling. So the absolute must-happen remodeling will occur and I trust that GSA will work with a successful bidder so that they know that they will be starting on December 14th. And in talking with our GSA Director and our Health and Human Services Director, I believe that in January, it may not be January 1st, could be January 15th, but that in January, we will vacate the Aphenito building and will be in the Avala Center and will be set up for business.
Thank you. And, you know, my concern is we've had deadlines before and I don't, I don't look at anything that's being done there as being particularly complicated. It's all just implementation and I think it had all been anticipated except maybe for delays around the permitting issue. And in addition to, you know, approving the permits, were there any conditions added by the city that would drive costs onto the project or did they pretty much approve the plans that we had submitted?
I can say that there were some additional requirements and there were some additional costs. I don't have that list to give you, but I could include it next week in my CEO report if this board would like to see that.
Personally, I would.
Yeah, I do believe that the costs have gone up. Additionally, some of the costs were, that we were looking at are really some other changes in, or other remodeling aspects of the building. You have to remember, the Aphenito building was much larger than the Avala Center. So, you know, we're still attempting to make this building not only business-friendly, but also an area that's conducive to providing a good work environment. So with that, we have had the delays and there's a little bit more money that will be expended. But I will get the report and Ms. McMenamy did want to be here today. I was the one who told her I didn't think she needed to be here, I didn't think it would be a big agenda item. But I will go ahead and bring a follow-up for you next week.
And I know, Ms. Angelo, in some brief conversations with Ms. Cryer, that we went over the needs in terms of the, and I do believe, I heard you say, safety. The fact is, the public is now going to frequent, in certain circumstances, the rear of the building where they had not before. So I was really emphasizing the lighting, the security. It's an open corridor right now, so to speak, on all sides of the building. You can sort of walk vertically across the property in a number of locations and, but now the public is going to be invited to do so in terms of accessing services. So enhanced security, new lighting and the structure around the rear for safety issues also, the pathways, the ADA, all of that has to make, that has to be in place for sure. But I was wondering and looking at these dates, because Ms. McMenamy, I know, had said that this was going to go out and everyone was expecting that the actual bid would have been out earlier than November 1. Is, does it need to be out for a full 30 days? That can't be reduced in any, I'm just trying to see if we could shrink the time because I have the same concern Supervisor McCown does. We're talking about beginning the construction at the holiday season and then, you know, you possibly have the inclement weather issue and...
Yeah, it's required that we have to have a 30-day period of time.
30 days, so that can't be reduced. What about getting it on the agenda possibly for the first meeting in December instead of the 13th?
I don't think we can do that. I don't think that we will have the bids back and the decisions made by then.
It would just give an extra week, is all.
Yeah, right. And again, this is the timeframe that came from GSA, so I believe they are thinking December 13th is the soonest. And, you know, the bids would come back by December 1st, so it would give them two weeks, so...
Supervisor McCown.
Well, and I think if the bids come back by December 1st, did you say?
Yes.
Then if they really want to expedite this, they could have it on December 6th. So that'd be my...
We'll see, we'll see what we can do. I mean, you know, certainly if we can expedite it, we will.
Because you can have the agenda item written up and then it's contention on the bids being received and...
Okay, all right.
Well, I just thought maybe that would save a week, that's all it does.
Okay, I will...
We've been in that building for 20 years, what the hell's the hurry? What's a week or two going to matter?
Some people are concerned, Supervisor.
Because we're about six months late already.
Hurry up and wait.
Okay.
Ace makes waste, John.
Okay, Ms. Angelo.
All right, so I think, so if there's nothing else on the moves, I will go ahead and move forward before we get to the Ledge Report. There's just two dates. Next week, November 8th is the Water Agency Workshop. That will come forward with Nash Gonzalez, our Planning Director, and then December 12th is the joint meeting. And what you have is attachments to your report is you have our Global Credit Report, which I believe Supervisor Pinchess mentioned, so I know he read it. This is from Standard and Poor's. This is our BBB minus rating. And you also have a copy of the HHSA Director's email to her staff, which talks about the moves and some of the steps that are necessary to get to the January date. And then you have, I think as part of Ms. Furman's report, the 12-point pension reform plan by our governor, that's actually very interesting. And so if there aren't any other questions, that is my report for today.
Supervisor Hamburg.
I hate to bring this up, but I just can't help it. The CSAC Medical Marijuana Working Group, there was a productive discussion. Could I just have a little description of what was that productive discussion and what are other counties doing in response to the federal government crackdown?
Well, there are a variety of opinions relative to the federal crackdown.
Federal crackdown and the recent decision in the PAC versus the City of Los Angeles case.
Oh, City of Long Beach?
I mean, Long Beach, I'm sorry. But, and I can get to that, but basically the meeting was pretty productive, you know, we did a case law update and a new legislation update and answered a lot of questions. We talked a little bit about our ordinance. LA County talked a little bit about what they're doing in terms of their code enforcement on their dispensary, dispensaries down there. And Tahama County also talked about, the Tahama County Deputy County Counsel actually argued in front of the court on the PAC decision, so he had a lot to share there. And there were a lot of folks on the phone from other counties wanting to know, you know, they wanted to know about the ordinances and there are a lot of counties that are interested in what we're doing here in Mendocino County. And again, there are a lot of counties that want to do outright bans altogether with respect to dispensaries, but our cultivation ordinance is very interesting to folks. So that's really what... So, that's really what we discussed, not too much more than that. There are some counties, and I think the League of Cities, they've issued a ruling that the PAC decision prevents the counties from issuing permits, having regulatory schemes that allow for permits. I haven't weighed in on that yet because I'm still waiting to see what, where PAC is going to go in terms of whether or not the Supreme Court, there's going to be a petition for review at the Supreme Court level. But we didn't have a lot of discussion on the federal crackdown period issue. We did talk a little bit about what happened here in Mendocino County, but there wasn't a lot of discussion on that. And I didn't get the sense that for those counties who have cultivation ordinances such as Tahama, Humboldt, I mean, and our county and Tulare County, that, that, that was going to be a problem at this point, so...
In other words, they're gonna, they're gonna stick with their ordinance?
They stick with their ordinance is at this point, yeah, so...
And, and what are, what are the chances that the decision that was made by the federal judge down south is actually going to, you know, become operative up here? Does it take a case up here? Is that what would bring...
You mean the PAC decision?
Yeah.
That was in the district, we're in the first district. That was the second appellate district. It is prevailing authority. It's persuasive authority. It's authority that's out there. And there is, there are, there is another case down out of Anaheim that basically conflicts with that. And in the Anaheim decision, the court held that there was no federal preemption. So, there's a conflict in the law and the Supreme Court could take it up. If the Supreme Court does not take it up and the case...
You're talking about the...
The PAC decision.
The Supreme Court, not the California Supreme Court.
California Supreme Court.
Oh, I thought this was a federal case.
It's a state case. No, it's not a federal case. So, if the California Supreme Court doesn't take up PAC and there's no de-publication of that case, I think we're going to have to have a discussion as to where we're going to go with 931. But I'm not going to raise that until I see what happens first.
Until you see if the Supreme Court takes it up.
Yeah, if they take it, because once the Supreme Court accepts review, then the case can no longer be used as authority pending the review. And so then we would wait and see what the Supreme Court decides. So, that's, that's where we're at on that.
And are any other counties getting the kind of attention from DEA that we are?
Not that I'm aware of. And maybe Supervisor McCowen might have additional information, but I'm not aware of that.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Supervisor Hamburg, both County Counsel and Supervisor McCowen were presenters. I listened in on the conference number and I thought they did a very good job and I thought it was a very good discussion and there was a ton of interest throughout the state. Maybe not necessarily with supervisors listening in, but certainly staff.
Well, and in particular, there's, there were a number of environmental health staff members present and their focus is on the edibles, you know, in terms of dispensaries and those kinds, the health regulations there. So, they're still trying to figure out what to do in that regard. And we did have at least one ag commissioner there that I was aware of. I think it was just one that, you know, listened in and participated, so...
Supervisor McCowen.
Okay, just one final thing. I want to say publicly that I appreciate Congressman Thompson signing on to the, I think it's Rora Bacher and Frank, maybe?
Party.
Bill which clarifies that states that have medical marijuana laws should be left alone by federal authorities. So, I appreciate Congressman Thompson signing on to that bill.
Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, the federal crackdown and responses to it, as County Counsel said, really was not a focus of the discussion and really got very little discussion.
Yeah.
But also, for the reasons surrounding the PAC decision that County Counsel has mentioned, she and I had a very brief discussion and we agree that, given that there's so much uncertainty and of course PAC centered directly on regulating versus permitting for dispensaries, so until some of those issues are clarified, either it goes up on appeal or it's de-published, that for the interim, it makes sense to not move forward with the development of a dispensary regulation because how PAC ultimately is decided will have a lot to do with what the ordinance might ultimately look like.
Right.
So, that, so that process is, I think we agree on hold, at least for right now.
Well, thank you for clarifying that, because that was another thing I've been curious about.
Supervisor Pinches.
When you really look at the big picture, though, when was Prop. 15?
215.
96.
215.
15 years ago. 15 years ago. It's really moved nowhere since then.
No.
We're still, we're 15 ye, I mean, if that isn't a definition of the worst government ever, I mean, on that issue. The biggest issue, no doubt, in the state of California. And it's been 15 years since Proposition 15 was voted into law by the voters.
215, sir.
Prop. 215, yes. I mean, we've, we've gotten nowhere in 15 years.
Yeah. Prohibition came in and was gone in 13 years.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're gonna have to get some legislators involved in this process and go to these meetings to get any outcome. You're not going to do it with staff, people and everything.
Well, I, I agree.
So, Ms. Angelo, are we ready now for Ms. Furman to do the ledge report? Okay. Oh, right.
Thank you, Kristi Furman, County Executive Office. There's so much going on right now and as much as it may seem like we really weren't brief in the CEO report, we're trying to find the balance between keeping the board members apprised of late-breaking news and developments so that when you're asked by your constituents what's going on, we can kind of give you in a nutshell, highlights at both the state and federal level. Last week's news was all about the Governor's pension proposal and his 12-point plan is attached to the CEO report. That information will be reviewed by the conference committee that met last week, but his proposal wasn't released in time for that hearing. They'll have another hearing in November where that information will be discussed. The Governor has said that he hopes to bring some of his proposals to the legislature this coming session, but I think it was interesting, on the SACB today, there was a little poll that was out there. How much of Governor Jerry Brown's pension plan will get to the statewide ballot? Nothing. Radical plan goes too far for Dems to go for it. Nothing. Wimpy plan doesn't go far enough for GOP to go for it. Something, some of the items, anti-pension spiking plan, for example, will go to November 2012 ballot. Everything. Brown successfully throws his weight, gets everything on the November 12 ballot. Other, and no opinion. So, they're making fun, trying to poke fun at some of these serious issues and weighing in on how far some of these issues might go. Looking at other state initiatives for next year, there are at least four initiatives relating to pension that may face voters in the ballot in November of 2012. So, there's a lot of activity around pension dialogue right now and that's certainly going to be a highlight as the legislature reconvenes in January. Also on the board's watch list, the state parks had their oversight hearing today. It was at least a three-hour hearing. I was trying to listen to it while the board session was going on this morning, but I did not hear if there were any conclusions or outcomes from that hearing, but it was well-attended and lengthy discussion on that issue. Another item on our watch list, we're hoping Senator Evans will be able to conduct a presentation to our board in late November or early December. As we previously had indicated, she was out of the country and we hope to have a discussion with her staff in the next couple of days to see if we can lock something in before the end of the calendar year. At the federal level, I sent the board an update today that the Senate took action to pass a mini-bus, a $182 billion appropriation on the three different appropriations for ag, transportation, commerce, justice, and they expect the next round that will go to a conference committee with the House. The continuing resolution under the budget appropriations expires about two and a half weeks from now on November 18th. And so, there's a lot of attention being given to preventing another government shutdown by November 18th with action by the House and the Senate. And then the Federal Deficit Reduction Super Committee also had a hearing today. So, there was a lot going on, both visible, viewable through C-SPAN on the East Coast and the California Channel here on the West Coast. Again, I wasn't able to listen to that hearing, but I will listen to some of the testimony after the fact and bring the board any updates that are relevant. At this point, we're just doing a lot of watching and observing impacts that will eventually flow through to local government and to California. The Governor will release his budget proposal in about 70 days from now. So, right as we're wrapping up some of the current fiscal implications and you'll receive your county budget update in a couple of weeks, we'll be turning right back around to the Governor's proposal for January. Here, Supervisor Brown, did you have a question?
I did.
Please.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Thank you, Ms. Furman. NACO sent out an alert and it had to do with an amendment that was being made to wipe out a large portion of the USDA rural development funds that this county has quite successfully gone after in the past. And actually, it was killed and so they will not wipe that funding out and I think that's really good things. We're looking at it anywhere from biomass to broadband and so on and so forth for economic development here in this county. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, that was the Coburn Amendment, a billion dollars in rural development. And I had prepared an off-agenda letter to ask this board to consider sending their statement of opposition, but as I was watching the Senate proceedings this morning, it became clear that we couldn't act quickly enough to get our, our statement on the record to our senators. So, we were fortunate that that was defeated in the Senate. Back to the state, I, you probably all have already received the update, but the CSAC annual meeting is coming up. It's in San Francisco this year and advanced registration is this Friday, the deadline to receive the advanced registration fees or fee discount. So, there are some key conference sessions, even if board members wanted to just go for a portion of the day, when those conferences are somewhat local, it really is advantageous for us to attend whatever sessions are available. So, I'm happy to talk with any of you if you'd like to hear more about what those sessions are for partial attendance or full conference attendance. I think those are the high hits. If there's any questions, I just wanted to kind of let you know, we're trying to watch what's going on and keep you informed of developments that will impact us.
Supervisor, yeah, go ahead. Supervisor Pinches.
Kristi, I just wanted to tell you that if you're really interested in watching these important federal hearings, you stay up till 3 o'clock in the morning and you can watch them on C-SPAN.
Thank you.
Is that what you do, Supervisor Pinches?
I, I, I watch the...
You said you did it once.
Yeah, I watch the, last week I watched the trade with Columbia, Panama and South Amer, or South, South Korea, the trade agreements. It was very interesting.
Okay. I bet it was.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Smith. And on the CSAC annual meeting, I don't know if any of you have gone to their agendas or not. Could you maybe make a copy of just the highlights for each of the supervisors? But there's also some CSAC Institute courses. Pension reform, I believe, is one of the, there were two very interesting ones.
I'll make those available to board members.
And I'll wait for my report to talk to you about the board meeting that will take place at the CSAC annual meeting.
Does that conclude your report?
It does.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So, let's move on to our final business, which is Supervisor Reports. Do you want to begin, Supervisor Brown?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Smith. The Policy Council on Children and Youth met last Thursday and we're still working on the bylaws and we decided not to work on them anymore, but to send them to County Counsel for review. So, they should be coming from the Bylaws Chair, Linda Crockett. We're also working on the council member seats and, and the seats are designed to represent certain entities within our county and it's changed and evolved over the years that it really does not reflect what should be there according to our bylaws. So, we're in the process of redoing that listing as well. We talked about the CSAC marijuana discussion, the working group, and again, I want to thank Supervisor McCowen and our County Counsel, because I know they both put a lot of work into it for their presentations that day. And then the Board of Directors had a conference call on Friday and it had to do with a potential ballot measure for a constitutional amendment. Language still has not been agreed upon. There was a lot of discussion about it. I believe they were going to rework some of the wording and it should be out either Wednesday or by Friday and they are going to be turning it in to get it in the process. But the board has not determined whether they are going to go forward with it or not and that's why the upcoming Board of Directors meeting at CSAC, and I can't remember if it's December 1st or December 2nd, will be, as Paul McIntosh is calling it, one of the most critical Board of Directors meeting or annual meeting that they've had probably about the history of the organization. And we're lucky it's close because everybody can attend.
Supervisor Pinches.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to remind the listening audience out there that if libraries are important to you, that there's only one left, one week left to vote. Most of you have your ballots in the mail, so get them in.
We're not supposed to wear those. It's county policy. But yes, everybody needs to go vote.
So, we still wear our hands.
No, County Counsel made me take mine off every time I've entered the building when she catches me.
I'm not saying what to vote for, I'm just saying to vote.
Well, there's the "I voted" buttons. You can wear those.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, Supervisor Pinches really wants to get the vote out.
We all do.
Yes, we do. You're exactly correct.
Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Local Agency Formation Commission, at its regular meeting on November 7th, will have an all-day training that will begin at 7:30 in the morning at the Grace Hudson Meeting Room.
It's actually half-day, John. It's supposed to end at noon.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, then, it is starting at 7:30, though, which is not, not hardly the normal starting time.
What are you training for?
I'll be on the road at...
It's all about how to learn to be a good LAFCO Commissioner.
I'm an alternate.
So, if you want to be on LAFCO next year, show up and we'll get you all trained up. Also, I see Supervisor Brown has the letter from the Association of Mendocino County Retired Employees and they are requesting that the county convene a committee that would examine the idea of expanding the pool that they're currently in for insurance to combine them with the, the active employees. And I think they're saying, don't prejudge the process and don't decide upfront that this idea is going to be rejected. And they would at least like to have the county look at it. And I certainly would be in favor of having an agenda item to at least examine that idea and discuss it. I think we owe them at least that much. So, if there's support for that, I would like to see that on a, an agenda sooner rather than later, so that we can at least discuss the points in their letter and offer a response.
I think that that's a good idea, although I do believe that we had an investigation that talked about legal questions with county liability relative to making that extension that we didn't previously have. But that can all be vetted and explored and certainly could be part of the agenda item. But I believe that that was the report from the consultant, which came to us during the open board discussion and said, we had looked into that. That was coming from the audience and he did address that and said, we've looked at that and our concern is such and such and we can, we can go back to the record, but I'm sure HR can actually provide us that information. I certainly would support that and I believe, Ms. Angelo, I requested after the last meeting and I believe you were going to reconstitute this because it actually is a, I believe that the last version anyway of the Retiree Health Committee was advisory to the executive office. And I had asked you after the last meeting, couldn't we get retiree members to back sort of, to, to either reconstitute that committee or get a, a dialogue process in place? And you said that you were going to look into that and I believe that you were going to send a staff person to AMCRE and that AMCRE would be the appropriate vehicle, of course, to get that representation. Because I was concerned after our last meeting that not only board members were really taken by surprise by the, the timing of... by surprise by the timing of the action, but certainly retirees were as well. So I think the way to do that is to actually get that committee reconstituted, so there's a direct conduit of retiree input on the healthcare issue. I think that's very important, and I believe that would be one step in doing so. And if it seems appropriate to have an agenda item that you could bring forward to do that, I think that that would be a good idea.
Madam Chair, Sue Goodrick, our HR manager, has been not only in communication but attending the AMCRE meeting and talking with the retirees and sharing information. And I will go ahead and follow up as far as reconstituting the committee or forming another committee, and then I can report back to this board. I believe that HR would be, is planning on reporting back to this board, particularly because we have open enrollment right now, so there are a lot of issues that are still coming up. So if you want something sooner than that, we can move on it.
Well, was she able to actually ID? I mean, I thought she was going to actually ID, or ID, help identify a process with them that would ID the individuals that would be the conduit or the liaisons to the county to continue the discussion? Because I think some of the folks were just really taken back by the timeliness or lack thereof of the last action item on this. And so I think the point was to get the dialogue back in place, so we would be having that discussion.
Why don't I just add that to next week's agenda, either to my CEO report, or that may be the better approach with it, and we can talk about it.
But I think we really do need to get into what the consultant was speaking about here, because my understanding is, from what he said, is that we did conduct that outreach, we did examine that, and we don't recommend it because of these liability issues associated with that action. But if that isn't necessarily the case, I agree with what my colleagues are saying. We should just dismiss it as something that isn't doable, vis-à-vis it needs to be part of the meet-and-confer process. So I don't think we should necessarily assume that it's dead on arrival, but there was this other issue that made me think at the time, oh, right, there was this other piece that was looked at, and it was the major stumbling block of why we couldn't merge the pools. Maybe that's not correct. Maybe we should, you know...
I think there were multiple reasons about why we would not merge the pools.
I do, too.
And I think meet-and-confer was certainly one of them.
And certainly, we haven't been...
I can't imagine today that we would be able to push this forward, but...
Well, we just need to be able to clarify, because clearly everyone wasn't really fully informed on that.
Right. So why don't I go ahead and give a report for next week?
Great. Supervisor...
Yeah, I just want to understand the connection between you putting it on your report and our putting it on the agenda, because I think it is timely.
It's the board's preference, if you want...
I thought what Supervisor McCowen was saying was that he would like to see it agenda-ed in a timely manner, and that's...
We could do that.
And I concur with that.
Okay. We could have it as an agenda item next week. That would be fine.
Good. And that's probably not time to ID those AMCRE members, but you, that was something that I had brought up.
And Human Resources may have done that.
Maybe they've done that.
I just don't have that information, so we'll have it as an agenda item next week.
From my point of view, if it's too quick to do it next week, we could do it the next week.
The 15th.
I just want to, I just don't want it to be something that kind of drags on, because it is very timely.
Okay. Absolutely.
Did you have other reports, Supervisor?
Sure. Very, very, very briefly. The first meeting on the revision of the Mendocino Town Plan was last Thursday night, and I just want to thank Janine for being there. I know if she hadn't been there, there would have been a ton of legal questions that would have come up, as it was. Because she was there, nothing came up of a legal nature, but her being there was very, very important, I thought. Nash did a good job. Roger Mobley did a good job. Abby Stockwell, they had it well organized. There was a tremendous turnout. The chair was there. I thank Chair Smith for being in attendance. Gosh, there was a hundred, over a hundred, over 100 people there, and nothing, you know, no food was thrown around, and no shoes, no... People got along. They, I think there was a lot of good input to the department, and I think it was a really good start on the process. So I know people felt like the county was finally really focusing some energy on their future, and I heard a lot of very positive comments. So thank you very much to everyone who showed up and made that a good event. That's it.
I just wanted to make note of the Simpson Lane Roundabout ribbon-cutting on November 7th, next Monday at 11:00 a.m., and they were on a very tight and rigorous goal of completion, and I think that they're certainly going to meet that, and it was for a November completion. And every time you do travel south, you see there's a new component that, towards the completion, that's been added, and the traffic flow is already underway. And I meant to bring it, but I didn't. There was a full-page ad in the Mendocino Beacon in the Advocate News that actually instructs folks, and I believe it was in English and in Spanish, instructs you on how to drive through a roundabout, and so it's been published in the paper. And it's been good so far, even though it's a...
It's in the middle.
Yeah. It's all going to be fine if no one does that. But it's been very good to date, and it's rather distracting. You're navigating a new trans, for some people that haven't driven through roundabouts, you're navigating this new way to get past Simpson Lane, and you've got, you know, there's activity on all sides of you, not to mention in the middle of the roundabout with things going on there, too. And it's working. So it really is going to be, I think, a lot, well, it'll be a piece of cake for people when finally it's all said and done, because you won't have, they would leave one of the pieces of large equipment in the middle of the roundabout when they're not working, and it's like a sculpture, so you drive around it, and it's just...
It should be easy to navigate for us politicians, because we're used to going around in circles.
Good, good point, Supervisor. So anyway, everyone's invited in. It will be on November 7th, and I think that's a pretty, the fact that they're able to have the ribbon cutting in early November is, I think, really a point to their dedication of really getting it done, and it's coming along, and it is, it's looking very, it's looking very nice. I wanted to point out and announce that there is a domestic violence and housing workshop offered by Legal Services of Northern California. It's Tuesday, November 15th, from 3:00 to 5:00 in Ukiah, and it's designed for service providers, so that would mean possibly staff and community-based folks, housing and resources for survivors, survivors' rights in applying for housing, common landlord-tenant issues, and survivors' rights under fair housing laws, and housing rights of survivors with disabilities. And you need to RSVP to Legal Services of Northern California by November 8th, if possible. And I attended yesterday a meeting of the Mendocino County Lodging Association and the Visit Mendocino Group, and there were two forums held. One was held inland, and this was the coastal one I attended at the CV Star Center, and it was an open forum on the Business Improvement District and changes they're talking about and want to discuss with their constituents on what these changes might look like. It was really, it was very informative, and an attorney was there that does this kind of work, and it was a very interesting dialogue on what's going on regionally for tourism. So you got not just the bid processes, but where is the money coming from? How are we spending it in this county? What are our regional partners doing? How are we the same? How are we different? And it was just the beginning of a discussion on changes they may want to make to the bid, and it was fairly well-received, and people asked really, really, really good questions. So it was a good, it was a good meeting, and there were probably about 35 to 40 in attendance. So it was, it was a well-received process, and I don't know if anyone attended the inland one, but this was the coastal one. Supervisor Brown?
On the roundabout, it's my understanding Caltrans is basically developing new standards for roundabouts that some of the issues that I have brought up about the Hopland and other roundabouts that I've either experienced or heard supposedly are supposed to be corrected.
In this one?
In the new standards that Caltrans has, and I don't know if it's applied to Simpson or not, but yeah, they do have new standards than when some of these other roundabouts that have been popping up were built. So hopefully yours has the new standard.
It would be interesting to see if it does have the new standards, and I don't, and I don't know, but that's a really, really good question to ask. And the signage looks good to date, and even with the construction they're doing. I was through one time in the evening down to 15 miles per hour with, you know, Caltrans staff there monitoring traffic, so they're really working on this. I don't know if it's 24 hours a day, but they do have evening work that they do with the overlay that they were doing, so it doesn't disrupt traffic in the daytime. It's a, it's a very orchestrated process, and they're doing a really good job, so I think it will be a good traffic calming measure when it's completed. Okay, Supervisor Pinches.
What's going on with the Aquatic Center?
Oh, there was a very brief, good question. There was a brief report to the meeting yesterday from Jim Hurst on the Aquatic Center. Didn't really have much Q and A, even though he volunteered to stay, and he was just there for that portion. Basically, as I think in an email went out from Steve Dunnecliff to the board on possible considerations for a sales tax measure by the city of Fort Bragg. Of course, CV Star is within the city limits, and the city is very interested in trying to maintain and preserve this very important resource. I think that, and it was alluded to, that not all legal questions have been addressed with how this would best go forward if a sales tax measure is to go forward and the city is to maintain and basically take over ownership of the CV Star Center going forward. So there's a lot of legal questions that still need to be addressed, but the idea would, it would be on the ballot next spring as a sales tax measure, so the city could use the sales tax to get a good portion of the dollars that are clearly there for maintenance and continued ownership that can't be charged and won't be able to be obtained by fees. So it's not a done deal yet, but that's, it's certainly been a public discussion. Number of meetings have taken place through the actual Parks and Rec District. This was a special sort of discussion that they just wanted to bring input to the tourism bodies of lodging and Visit Mendocino, so that's why they had the topic yesterday.
They would have to bifurcate the property they have on Highway 20 from the Star?
Correct.
Because they would be collecting taxes in an area that didn't...
Yeah. So there would be, there'd be division on that, and so there'd be...
More complicated than...
Right. So there's a lot of complications in this one, given where the resources of the district currently are going, and how does that get worked out, and differences of opinion about the avenue of bankruptcy, and what does that add?
Have they put the property on Highway 20 up for sale?
Yes, it is for sale.
No, it isn't.
Yeah. Supervisor Brown?
Yes, and isn't, if I remember correctly, the district itself runs all up and down the coast?
It does.
Yeah, all the way down to the South Coast.
Okay. Yeah.
It does. But, so I think that's part of the legal question. It would then, I guess, become a city or a municipal service, the Aquatic Center, in order to try to come up with a tax base. Mr. Hurst went over the, you know, they went round and round with the tax issues, and they have for some time. Folks, I think there's some concern that the time to have done the increment for the entire district would have been back prior to the Aquatic Center opening, under the umbrella of and review of, gee, you know, admission charges are never going to have this be totally operable. We need a tax increment in order to make sure this is a solid program going forward. That didn't occur. So the timing doesn't, anyway, they've looked at all the angles, and they are feeling that they're the most encouraged by having it be a city sales tax increment compared to all the other options they've looked at.
Sure.
And that's where they're at at this point. They're trying to work out the fine print between the city and the Rec District to see if they can come to an agreement, and that would then get on the ballot.
Have they done a survey about the successful rate, maybe, of the sales tax measure?
Oh, yeah. I think they're doing all their due diligence to figure out the most successful avenue if that sales tax measure goes forward.
They're not settled on a half-stamp?
I think that is, I think that is what they're looking at, but they're still in negotiations about how you're even, how that's going to be structured, so I think it's not quite a done deal.
Yeah, but it's only a small...
Because the bankruptcy question is the biggest one. Would they go down the course of bankruptcy to create this bifurcation, as you talked about, or is there going to be another method, and that's still being discussed? Okay. Any other business? Okay, then we are adjourned until next Tuesday.